We're not quite ready.
We're not standing up.
We're ready.
Who else is?
Chris.
John Roberts. John Roberts, can you please?
Go ahead, Chris.
I apply to the House.
To the House of Representatives. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with his will, liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting's on cruise control. Announcements, comments, anybody and everybody. Seeing nothing, our upcoming meetings are December 22nd. It's an open budget workshop in the school board room at 7:00 PM. Then Christmas and New Years, we're actually taking those off this year. Next regular meeting is January 3rd here, 7:00 PM. We have a budget workshop January 5th here, 7:00 PM. Budget public hearing, repeat, budget public hearing is January 11th in the school board room at 7:00 PM. January 17th is a regular meeting with the public hearing on the bond, that will be here, 7:00 PM. And January 31st, a regular meeting at 7:00 PM in the town offices. Somewhere in there, I think we also get into filing for upcoming terms on the, on the school board, don't we?
Yes.
Okay. Nate?
Two items. If in fact we are able to complete tonight's agenda, the board might want to consider canceling the December 22nd budget meeting. We could put an item on the January 3rd board meeting for the board to kind of give us direction as to how they'd like to see the budget go or respond to any questions, also give the budget committee an opportunity. And then come back on the 5th with any adjustments or further recommendations or responses to it, and then that would also give the budget committee an opportunity. Considering the 22nd is right before the holiday, people might appreciate having the evening off.
Sounds good to me. What would my fellow board members in the budget committee think about checking in at the end of tonight's session to see if we feel a need for that meeting? Want to go that way?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that then. All right, good, thank you. Do you have other things?
Yes, second thing. Both the board and budget committee had requested some information at the last meeting, and I passed it out. There are two sheets. First one was a question about state downshifting of costs. And what Peter has done is prepared a chart for you. Let me just walk you through it. Catastrophic aid, which comes in as revenue, based on anticipated 60% of the 100% that we should be getting back on catastrophic aid, is the equivalent of $223,000.
In this year alone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Teacher retirement, based, the rate that we have is 11.3%. So normally, the state allegedly would have picked up 35%, which would have meant our rate would have been 9.07%. So if the state, so basically what that nets out is, is a total of $601,000 and change. The shortfall on vocational education and vocational transportation is 87, 850, and $4,000 respectively. So the total downshift is $917,162, which, a combination of revenue and appropriations, has a 27 cent impact on the tax rate.
Let me, let me pause at that point. Any questions or comments, anybody? Because I have one that I, that I'd like to raise here. I had a electronic exchange with one of our state reps about this, who suggested that the 1. some odd million dollars, 1.6 I guess it was, in hold harmless money that was delivered to us from the state should in fact cover all of this. Got a response to that?
Well, in that sense, it does. It's one time, it's a one-time fix. But the other way of looking at it is, these appear to be, to me, permanent downshifts of costs. So if in fact the state had been fulfilling its responsibility, the tax rate would have been 27 cents less.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
Moving forward.
Moving forward. The other thing to keep in mind is that the adequacy formula, the internal workings of the adequacy formula have been significantly changed and adjusted. So you take away that hold harmless provision, which basically runs out in a year, you're short the 1.1 million in adequacy money, and this stuff remains. So it's a down, it's, by any stretch of the imagination, it's a downshifting of, of cost. What's also important to note is if you go back to the previous biennium, the amount of money that the state contributed to adequacy aid compared to what it is now is about $180 million less. And keep in mind, the total adequacy number is composed of two pockets of cash. One is the state contribution, 500 and some odd plus million. The other is the statewide education property tax. Statewide education property tax is just another name for a local, local tax, all right? So the state's contribution is 500 million and change, and when you consider the total pre-K through 12 educational expenditures in the state of New Hampshire is 2.3 billion, the state is contributing what, roughly 25% of that total amount? And another, and the rest really is funded by local monies. All right?
Local monies being when you combine the num, the amount that local taxpayers contribute, regardless of the name it's under?
Correct. Right, so, you know, there, there are some significant issues there. Also, what I think everyone has to keep an eye on are several pieces of pending legislation. One has to do with a myriad of constitutional amendments, which I believe will have a significant impact on funding going forward. Excuse me. And also, for lack of a better term, the tuition tax credit bill that will be proposed, which would allow businesses to contribute to quote-unquote "a scholarship fund," and that money then would be used to give, give scholarships to home ed students, private school students, parochial ed students. And the argument that is going to be made is it has no impact on schools. I would state that that is not the case, because if a business is contributing and getting a tax credit on their business profits tax, that obviously reduces the amount of revenue coming in, which certainly would impact the amount of money that would be available for public schools. And if I understand correctly, I haven't read the whole bill, is that amount of money, that scholarship money escalates, and it is, if I understand correctly, and I may be wrong, so don't write this in stone, that scholarship money would also be available to people who already have kids in home education and whoever, and also presently in private schools or parochial schools. So theoretically, you're not going to be quote-unquote "reducing enrollment significantly." The other thing to keep in mind, and we had this situation several years ago with attempted voucher bills, is that people made, made the assumption that in fact, well, if 50 kids move down along their school district, you're going to save costs because 50 kids move out. Well, if 50 kids moved out of third grade at Matthew Thornton--
Right.
--you could lose money. But if 50 kids moved out of the district K through 12, depending on how they are distributed, you could not reduce your costs, and what you would wind up doing is losing revenue. So you take your 50 and multiply it by the $3,400 number, you're reduced by that amount of money, and you're not able to reduce your operating expenditures. So if, depending on the kids are spread out, if I've got 25 kids in a science class at the high school, and one kid is gone, I still have to hire the teacher, I still have to heat the room, I still have to provide light in the room, I still have to buy the chemicals for the science lab and the whole bet. You don't save any money.
Right, there's no, there's--
Right.
--a difference between fixed and variable costs that I think sometimes people don't understand.
That's correct. So, that being that, then also what we provided to you was a 30-year history of New Hampshire retirement systems, employer and member contribution rates. Lisa had put this together, Lisa McKenney, and what you can see going back to 1982 through If you notice, let's say at 2011, fiscal year 2011, the employer rate was 8.02%. Of that 8.02%, the state was picking, that was on a 75-25 share, so the state was picking up 2.68. So what we were paying, in, in essence, was the 8.02 minus the 2.68.
And that is percentage of what?
Payroll.
Payroll.
Percentage of payroll.
Or full-time equivalent payroll.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, and then you move to 11, to 2012, the employer rate is 11.30% and the state's picking up zero.
So we're being mandated to pay 11.3% of our payroll as a surcharge on top of it to fund the state retirement system?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, now, not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying, here's what it is.
I'm just saying what it is, yeah.
Right. Here, here's the way it is. There are arguments on both sides of the ledger, but the point I'm making here is that when the state initially required public employees to join the retirement system, required public entities, meaning school, fire, police, towns, all that stuff--
And did that start in 1982?
I think it was a little bit before that.
No, it was really the last.
The, the hook on it was, the state was going to pay 35%. They're not. The other thing to keep an eye on before we get in is there is, there's going to be legislation, and I really don't want to get into it too deeply tonight, and Peter is much more facile with this than I am, is creating a defined contribution plan for, like, new employees coming in, as opposed to a defined benefit plan. The issue for us, and let's forget the impact on the employee for a minute, the issue for us is going to be, you are then cutting off pipeline of cash going in to fund your forward liabilities, right? So as more people retire, you in effect are decreasing the number of people that are contributing to your defined benefit plan.
Which would be sort of like not putting any more money into the social security system starting tomorrow.
Right. So the question is whether or not anyone has or can come up with a bridging plan to go along with it. Otherwise, I think what you could wind up finding, the state could wind up finding themselves in, is forward-funded liabilities, right, Peter? That you really don't, you're not generating the revenue to fill in, then the way, the option of filling that hole, if you want to call it, is increasing rates, both for the employer as well as the employee. I don't know how else you're going to generate the revenue to meet your legal obligations.
So how about simply defaulting on it?
Yeah, you can't do that.
Can't you?
No.
Good.
So anyways, that's just food for thought down the road, but the, the initial question was, is there a downshifting of cost? I think the answer is yes. The hold harmless is a Band-Aid approach to long-term issue, and you've got a downshifting of cost. So that if the state had met its legitimate obligations in the areas that we had defined, we'd be okay. And what the impact is, if you take it, if you count the loss of revenue and the increased cost, is about 27 cents, right? So it's a substantial hunk of change, you know, as you look at this and as, as you go forward. So, no, it's something to keep in mind. And my mind, and I'm just one person, I, I see it as a downshifting, because you're getting less revenue than you, than you should be getting. It's that simple.
Any questions? Comments? No? All right, let's move into the budget workshop.
Okay.
Peter, I guess you're up first.
I think I'm up probably the whole night, but we'll start off with, with food service, and I don't have any tweets, I don't have a mood, mood ruler, I just have the old-fashioned cookies to pass around.
Okay.
And we have a food service presentation, if you want to move around. That'd be great. Huh? Yeah.
I think I'll go sit in front of the cookies.
People?
Maybe we'd like a cookie.
All right. First of all, we're going to focus on the financial picture of the food service to pop in. Certainly, as you can see Nancy standing, sitting next to me, if you've got any pressing questions on the, the new law, we can, we will certainly answer them, or you can email us later and say, "I've heard this," or "I've heard that." But we thought with the limited time, we'll focus strictly on the revenues and expenditures of the program. Certainly that the new law has, has some impact. First of all, you should know that the, the food service program is, is a self-funded program. It resides in what's called the special revenue fund, that the sales from breakfast, lunch, banquets and so forth and so on, you know, the federal commodities and reimbursements are all the revenues that generate the-- What is going on?
Cookies.
That, that generate the--
You know the first five minutes of this presentation are a wash--
I understand. I should know by now.
Until the cookies get around, yeah.
That's when we should ask for the money.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Just tell them you want this much money, and while they're not paying attention, they'll vote on it.
The, the sales and the, and the federal commodities are what generate the revenue that's, that runs the program, the expenditures for food, labor, and so forth. The current pricing for the, for the lunch program at the middle in high school is $1.70, and then there is a premium meal once in a while for a dollar--
$95.
$1.95. And the elementary schools pay $1.45. The free and, the free and reduced--
Free is free, reduced pay 40 cents for lunch and 30 cents for breakfast.
But the federal reimbursement for free and reduced is?
$2.76.
And the reduced?
Well, $2 and--
Right, 36, but--
36 cents.
We get the 40 cents back.
We get the 40 cents from the--
Excuse me, does breakfast at the high school cost $1.72?
No, it costs $1.45.
Thanks.
If you remember, just, so back, back in May, we did, the, the board did agree on a 20 cent across-the-board increase from, for the food service program starting in this year. The budget that we are proposing or showing tonight does include a 20 cent, not percent, 20 cent increase across the board. Now, as our policy indicates, tonight, we don't necessarily need to approve a price increase. We're just telling you that the revenues that we, that were in the budget were generated off of a 20 cent increase across the board.
I think Nancy has a question.
Move the price increase?
For this year.
Oh, this is--
This is FY13. So, so I could say an additional 20 cents from what was approved this year.
Part of the new act, the Healthy Hungry Kids Act, is that we must gradually increase our meal prices to the same level that we receive for free lunches.
Okay, thank you.
Because that will, because that will make them all feel better, because they won't be giving us too much money.
Well, we won't.
That'll make the government feel better, yes.
Okay. We, the 20 cent increase, and we did take into account, as best we can, the projected enrollment, and i.e. the percentage participation in the high school, middle school, and the elementaries. So that's where, that's where we come up with those revenue generations. As Nancy had said, the new, part of the new law does require a formula to increase your lunch price to get to, which one is it, the two?
The free, $2.76.
To get to 2.76 over a period of time. The formula that, that is, is given to us would increase the price by seven and a half cents. You round up to the nearest nickel, which gets us to a minimum that by law, we, we should increase next year as a dime. We're, we're getting, we're asking for an additional dime, and we can get into that a little bit tonight, and then obviously, as we normally do, as we get to closer April and May, and we have a much better picture of what happened the year, we can, we can go forward. I did want to show where we are in comparing to the school districts in our, in our area. Just a, where are we in, in regards to the, to the others and of similar size in our vicinity? So, as you can see, we're pretty much at the bottom of this small sample. We had Conker one time, and we can know, we know Conker's higher than us. Everybody okay? Any questions on the revenue piece of this, before we go into expenses, or do you want to wait till the, till the very end?
Just real quick, just so to remind the public, what's the tax impact of this program?
Well, as I mentioned, okay, it's a self-funding program.
Exactly.
So there is no property tax that is used to offset the food, the, the school lunch program.
Thank you.
Anything else? On expenses, labor is, is calculated 1% above the current budget. And I'll just tell you, the reason for that small number really is that when we, after we did the budget for the current year, we did reduce three hours a day of labor at middle school. Am I correct?
Correct.
So that number, obviously, the actuals will be lower than the budget, and that gets figured into that 1% higher than the, than the current budget. For food costs, they are significantly higher, and I will tell you, we, we erred on higher. The FY13 is the first year that the, we believe anyways, at least at this point in time, that the 100% of the new guidelines for--
Nutrition.
--healthy--
Hungry.
Healthy, yeah, healthy, hungry program will take effect. And you've heard Nancy over and over again, and I've heard it over and over again, the emphasis is on fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, larger, larger servings of those, I believe, to offset--
Yes.
--the fat content or, or something. And we just don't know at this point what that all means as far as how the vendors who serve the various school districts will be pricing their commodities. So we erred on the high side of the, of food, of food prices. Nancy is going to talk two seconds. We do belong to the, to the co-op, a regional co-op, that has a fair amount of school districts as, as participating members, and Nancy can tell you a little bit about how that works and the benefit of being part of this cooperative. And in fact, so everybody knows, she was one of the founders of the, of the program when she was over at another school across 93.
The Purchasing Co-op is a group of 22 schools feeding over 60,000 students in the state of New Hampshire. We're one of the largest co-ops in the area, and we collab, we collaborate our food needs for the year and set it out to bid. And generally, the lower, lowest bid wins, and we traditionally have three or four companies bidding for the business. And believe it is a $3.5 million bid at this point.
Okay. Okay. The equipment, this is moving away from the operating expenses, pretty much, as you can see, food, milk, and the other expenses are pretty much flat. So I didn't want to spend too much time on those, but go right to the equipment. We have some concerns, needs, and we have a funding option for the board to consider. We have talked a couple of years now about the refrigerator freezer at Matthew Thornton. Just so everyone's aware, that the refrigerator freezer at Matthew Thornton died in mid-June, mid-June.
Yeah, last year.
At the moment, we are loaning, I'll use that, a mobile cooling unit from the high school, which now puts the high school in a little bit of peril to scramble for, for cooling, for cooling area. So we can't say, well, can you get one more year out of that refrigerator freezer? It's already gone. We have the, we have specked out the size of the freezer, we have specked out the location where it will go. It'll be, if you've ever seen the, the refrigerator freezer unit or the cooling unit at South School, it's about that size. We've already done the specs, we've already done the location, we've already had DigSafe come in and verify that wherever you want to put this is okay, there's no lines or we're going to hit anything.
Peter, could you just explain what the exact situation is at Matthew Thornton right now with the refrigerator freezer?
Well, okay, I'll, wait, go ahead.
Currently, we have about 50 square feet, cubic feet of freezer space, and 36 square feet, cubic feet of refrigerator space. Now, 36 cubic feet is just a little bit bigger than your home refrigerator, and the freezer is approximately twice the size of your home refrigerator. So it's not enough room for us to store the necessary foods required to meet the menu. We also don't have enough space for the fruits and vegetables, so that a variety is not offered to the students there, because we just don't have the space to store it. We, we know for a fact that the students prefer fresh fruit over canned fruit, and it's been difficult for us to continuously meet that need. The, yeah, yeah.
The serving line at Matthew Thornton, we've mentioned this now, and this has been pushed off for a couple of years. I have a picture if you want to see it, but remember, the serving line just isn't the rollers that the kids put the trays on and roll it down. It is a series of warming ovens that keep the food at temp, at the proper temperature. They have been, they've, they're failing on us. We've had repairs, we've had even, even, uh, smoke--
Smoke.
--at one time come out. We know from our incident up at North School that the serving line is a six to eight-week delivery time. So if, if this should go out, or, or even a significant piece of this goes out, it puts the ability to serve the kids prop, on time, as well as the proper food temperature at a, in jeopardy--
Risk.
--in risk. The software and hardware upgrade, I think we discussed this the last time, we are two versions behind the current software of the, that the vendor has. Support for the one that we have is on its way out. They told us it would be most likely a year from now. We're in December, they're looking at December of 2000, or 2012, as phasing out support for the program we have. We can get into it now, or you can wait till May. There are significant reasons on top of the support going out, why the software is appropriate for us to, to upgrade to. The hardware is run by the software. The hardware that we have now can't run the software, it's been verified by the IT department. Remember, the hardware is the cash register unit. It's a one-piece unit with a CPU and a touch monitor. The, we've had it, we've had it priced out by the IT department, it's about $1,000 a piece, and we have--
14.
14 of them. And then finally, the other piece with the hardware and software upgrade is the, if you look at the IT's regular schedule for server replacement, as luck would have it, the food service-- the food service server is up to be replaced this coming summer. But from where I sit, works well, because if you're going to go to a whole new platform, up two versions, you're better off going into a new server anyways and doing it then, not migrating. And the final one is the double ovens at the middle school. If you looked at the CIP spreadsheet, these double ovens were slated for FY14. And the reason why I have it here for FY13, I'll get to in just a moment. These are double, there are two double ovens, they're electric ovens. One of them is already failed and can't work. Can't work for two reasons. It doesn't work, and if it did work, we don't have enough power in that area to get four ovens going. So, again, we're using a portable heating unit to keep the food at a certain temperature to be served. My idea was, if these double ovens were indeed scheduled for FY14, if you look at the CIP that has been updated, if we take these capital needs requests and put them, include them in what I'll call the operating capital lease, this will take care of her equipment needs to the time that this lease runs out. So, what you'll have is one year overlap of the lease that she has for the high school freezer, and then two years of just this lease with no other equipment needs that are at least we know of or are planning for. And the next capital or equipment request would be after this lease expires. It comes to 112,000, and I'm the first one to tell you, the food service department can't handle 112,000 one-time capital expenditure for FY13. That was the other reason for using the concept we did with the high school refrigerator freezer or freezer and spread it over three years.
What would that do to per-meal costs if we tried?
Well, I'll tell you that the increase, I believe, if I remember correctly, was 40,000 over for three years.
What's the answer to that question? What's the answer to his question?
Well, I can't say what it'll do to meal pricing, because
How many meals do we serve in a year?
200,000?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Half a million, right?
Yeah, like, we, yeah, about 600,000.
So, it would add 20, 25 cents.
Well, it takes care of the federal government's problem.
Yeah.
But in the budget we gave you, we incorporated, I believe, the concept of spreading these payment over three years.
But seriously, the federal government's forcing us to raise the price for no reason at all, except to make kids hungrier. So, if we raise the price, does the federal government care what we spend it on? Do they force us to spend it on apples?
Well, they would, they would, they would force us through periodic audits, which we had one in South School. They come to verify the nutritional values of the, at least for South School, what was being served.
How'd we do?
Did okay. They were, I want to explain what they found, except for the fact that we can't serve 2% milk anymore either.
Which report am I reporting on?
South Schools issue on the vegetables that she found.
They found that the amount of calories served was not enough, and that made the fat content of the school meal 31% instead of the requisite 30%. And they felt that by serving more fruits and vegetables, it would increase the calorie count to the level that they were requiring, and it would decrease the percentage of fat in the meal to the requisite 30%.
So, they are really honing in on fresh fruits, vegetables, and then the portion size of those healthy commodities, for lack of a better word. Finally
So, Peter
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So, you want to take the 121,000, and you're going to push it over three years for 52,000? Is that right? So, back to the question of what it would cost if I take 500,000 meals, would you agree that it's like 10 cents a meal over the next three years?
If you took, I'm going to trust your math.
So, would we do it that way? So, is that what your 20 cent increase is going to take here?
I thought it sounded low.
I'll trust your math at this point.
Is my math, it might be wrong.
See, yeah.
Is it 600,000 meals?
Was about 40,000.
Nine cents, so 10 cents, nine cents, yeah, and the 600, right.
Yeah, the 10 cents across the board, yeah.
So, is that in your 20 cent increase?
Yes.
And that's how you're going to pay for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Finally, as I, I'll conclude with this, and then obviously
Wait, whoa, that's how, that's how you're going to pay for what?
The lease on the equipment.
There's, they're suggesting a 20 cent increase. In the beginning slide was, there's a 20 cent increase, and I asked if that 20 cents included the 9, 10 cents that's going to cost for the coverage of the 121,000, which is 52,000 per year over the next three years.
So, money out of, money out of the food service budget is going to go to paying for the capital, to contributing to the capital lease?
Well, we do that now for the high school freezer.
Okay.
We, what we'll do is, I mean, we'll prorate, if the capital lease, I'm just making up numbers now, it's 400,000, this is 100, make it easy. If it's 25% of the lease, the lease, when the annual payment, we'll just take, we'll have food service as a transfer, 25% of what that number is over We do that now for the high school freezer.
Rather than make up numbers, the, so the question, maybe for next, or some session by communications, is the, if we were, instead of leasing, if we were to expense this option over the next three years? Because I was hearing that it may be about 20 cents a meal to expense that option, and then I'm hearing it's 10, 9 cents a meal to run it through a lease.
The cost of the money over the three years is roughly $40,000.
Right, which is about 10 cents.
Which is about 10 cents.
What John also said is, when I did the budget, it included
I understand.
The revenues that have been projected will cover a
So, my question, well, my question is, that you don't have to answer now, is if we roll out the lease and put it in as an expense and increase your meal costs, what do the meal costs increase to do it that way?
You want the 121 expensed in one year?
Well, I want the 100
No, no, I'm asking
I want the 100, I want it planned on for future years. I mean, we have not had an increase since 2005.
We had one this year.
Oh, right, but since we haven't had one, the federal government is forcing us to increase the prices, whether we like it or not. So, if we can meet their needs by increasing the prices, yet not bothering to pull out another, pulling out a lease, and we can say to them, we met your guidelines, we raised the prices, the students are now paying more for their meals.
So, Steve, based on 600,000 meals on that 121, it's roughly 20 cents for the year?
Of which we've already planned
Of which 9 cents
No, no, because he has some stuff that he's baked in.
Well, but he's pulling out, but we pull out the 9 cents, so is it 30 cents? That's, you can answer that question in the future.
I'm trying to figure out what exactly you're trying to get to.
I think if I understand what Steve said was, if you don't lease it and you buy everything
In one year.
One year, it's 120-some-odd thousand dollars, right? What would, the impact would be if it's 600,000 meals, the impact is 20 cents, an increase of 20 cents a meal to cover the equipment cost.
I can get that for you tomorrow. Right. I don't want to say I'm shooting from my head.
And it's not replacing your other items that you have to increase for.
Right.
They're going to, we need to get up to a certain amount in a certain period of time.
Actually, I think the number is 138,2, because you're subtracting 121 from the leasing funds, and you still have a remaining balance of 17,2.
But the 17 is the current lease.
Okay, all right, got it.
121 is the, okay, new items or new requests.
Don't get me wrong, from a business perspective, I'm not interested in buying capital with expense money, but the federal government's the one that wants us to increase the rate of how much we charge.
I can
It's not a good business decision. It's not one I would make in my own company, but I don't, I don't have my customers telling me that I must raise my prices to them. Otherwise, they won't do business with me. And that's what the federal government's done here.
Nancy?
My question is this, we're basing this on participation of 600,000 meals a year. If we have a year where that's not the case, if participation decreases and, God forbid, we run in the red, then how do we fund your deficit?
Well, there's two ways. We would, as best we can, pull back. Like, for example, this year, or this summer, we were supposed to have done the Matthew Thornton serving line that was scheduled to go in, but after reviewing the 20 cent increase, remember, we asked for quarter, we didn't think we had enough revenue that was going to cover that, and indeed, I'm happy we made that decision, because we wouldn't have enough money to cover it. If we run into a red, I think your question is, at the end of June 30
Yes.
She's in a deficit, it's required by law that a transfer from the operating budget cover her deficit, or its deficit.
Which speaks to Todd's point, which if we have a situation like that, then this is not a self-paying program. Would that be a correct statement?
No, I mean, I would, I would, I would say for that one year, it wasn't, but I would, what I would intend in the financial plan to re, I'll use that as, I would set it up so that would be a loan, and that loan would be repaid back to the general fund over a year or two years, whatever, whatever we think is feasible. If it's recurring, and what some districts do, I mean, some districts do, on an annual basis, budget 50, $60,000 to keep the price of lunch artificially low, for lack of a better word. We have not done, and then predominantly, that the school lunch program is a self-funded program.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ron, go ahead.
Couple of questions. Last year's budget, we said the walk-in freezer at Matthew Thornton was going to be 25,000. This year, it's 40,000. Obviously, that's not inflation. We're getting a bigger freezer, or refrigerator. Why the difference in that price? Second question is on the double oven.
Yeah.
You had 16,000, now that's 28,000. I guess those are a couple of the questions, is why have they significantly increased in prices? It's difficult sitting up here to make legitimate decisions when those numbers that go into the expense account get added on, that change so drastically from one year to the next.
All right, I will, I'll go back and look. My guess is, when we first did the refrigerator freezer, it is the box, and now what we're looking at is the box plus the installation. I'll go back and look. I'm just telling you, from what I can remember, the first number we did was, what was the cost of the box? And then, we learned from the high school, there's also the pad, the setup or whatever, and that added additional cost, but I can look at that.
One of the other things that's, that we've got to be cautious of, you know, this year we went with a three-year lease, and our budget last year, and I've got the book here, we said that the, we were going to fund the freezer over a period of five years.
Right.
And we, with the lease, we moved it down to three, so we doubled the monthly payments, the yearly payments.
Annual payments, correct.
So, that's the second thing that, if we're expected to do some, some future look-ahead on this budget, we need to have some information that we can carry one year to the next, because this capital expense seems to be one of the larger numbers in it that tends to drive it.
I understand, but you're also going to remember, the last couple of years, we were asked if we could get by one more year, get by, and we agreed, recognized the issue.
But I'm going by the numbers here, and we made those decisions based on the numbers that you had here. If you were going to tell me then that you, that we were going to make the bottom line 17,000, the oven's next year is 28,000, and we're going to, you know, increase the freezer by 15,000, my decision may have been different.
Anybody else?
What's the lifespan, or life expectancy of the equipment that you're talking about?
Well, let me see. The serving line at Matthew Thornton, it was installed in 1985.
Oh, okay.
All right? The ovens, you remember, you get an age?
No, I didn't get an age.
My guess will be, the ovens were put in when the middle school was expanded, which I believe was '86. The software, the software and hardware, I mean, that's Right. And the last one is the refrigerator, I'd say 20, 25 years.
Thank you. Peter, can you prioritize these equipment purchases? I mean, in terms of, it sounds like the refrigerator at Matthew Thornton is a need-to-be-done-yesterday situation. Are there others that if the decision were to expense them as opposed to lease them, that there are things in there that would be great to have if we had the money, but couldn't wait till next year, whether it's a serving line or something that's not a
Well, here's a, I'll just, here's a situation that we face. We serve, forget the middle and high school, for example, we serve somewhere in the order of 250 kids at the elementary. We know, for example, the serving line is a six to eight-week window to order. So, if the serving line completely dies on us, and at one time, we thought it did, but we got it fixed, we're looking, like, what do we do for six to eight weeks? And then, we have to install it while school is in. So, we get to a situation where we can't wait till it breaks. We did one time in a bind. We have to anticipate that it's a 30-year life, we've got 30 years, we can go a couple beyond 30, but we can't wait till it dies. I guess the only one I could say that we can't, that if we didn't have the money, absolutely didn't want to do it, would be the double ovens at the middle school. And they were scheduled for FY14 anyways. As I said, my idea was that if we pull them in, we got all our capital needs or equipment needs, whatever you want to call them, until this three-year lease, if we go that way, expires. That was my only reason to pull that in. That could go out maybe also, but again, we're already down one oven. If the middle school drops another oven, then we've got, then we've got chaos.
Any of the equipment that we have that's kind of borderline material that we fix internally as opposed to subcontract it out?
What we do is, especially if it's HVAC-related or electrical, we have the building and grounds crew will come over and take a look at it. If it's within their abilities and they understand what's going on, they will fix it for us. And if you remember at the beginning, I said, the direct costs are covered for the program by its sales. We wouldn't then charge out, you know, service for them. So, they would look at it first, and then, if they can't get to it, or if they can't get to it in a reasonable time, because they've got an emergency at North School, we would then, then we will then contract out the service repair issue.
And just by way analogy, I'm thinking of these people who say that when your car costs more to fix monthly than it does to bank the monthly payment, then it's time to get a new car. And so, I'm kind of thinking, if there are certain pieces of equipment that we can service, and we're, you know, it's more cost-effective to try and get that extra year, putting the money on something we need immediately, if that's something that can be done.
My final slide is just fund balance, and I'll remind everybody that we have the fund balance policy. To get to Nancy's point, the program did lose an FY11 over $111,000. It had the surplus to cover it. Remember, for those of us that were here in 2004, when Nancy took over, the program was growing, revenue per meal was higher than the cost per meal, and so, we were able, like, somewhere around in the years of 2004, '05, '06, and '07, without a price increase, simply because of the without a price increase, simply because of the percentage of students eating, add to, add to the program surplus. And we've been using that surplus. We took care of the North School kitchen when the North School pro, um,
Renovations.
North School renovations were done. The food service program at the same time updated the kitchen, same thing at South School. And then, the previous year was a small deficit, about ten thousand, if I remember.
Yes.
And then, last year, we knew it was going to be a much larger number, and behold, it is. The fund balance, as it is now, I believe is around seven thousand dollars in deposits. So, we are below what we call that financial stability, sustainability line. And to get to Nancy's point, any negative balance must be covered by the general fund.
Through a loan. That's me, through a loan.
Well, it has to be covered through, right, it would be a transfer over, and then, I would set it up as a due-to, due-from, what we call, and then, through future revenues or nets, we would, that money would come back over.
Here's why I'm asking.
From the law point of view, it has to be covered.
Here's why I'm asking that. Based on the presentation, I'm understanding that provided we set our prices such that they are enough to cover the expenses, then this program is set up to be entirely self-funding, including food, personnel costs,
Labor.
labor, retirement, capital, equipment, the whole nine yards. So then, there is no reason to ask the question, why are we serving hot lunches in the first place? Why don't we just make everybody bring a bag of food? Correct? I mean, this program goes away, and there is no less money that we're taking from taxpayers?
Correct. However, it is a federal mandated program.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Just like that.
One other, one other question, and this is more operational than anything else. And Rich, you might want a piece of this, too. What would it take? My, my understanding is that there are sometimes at the middle school, what they call split classes, where, split periods, where you have half a science class, get up, go to lunch, come back and have the second half of your science class? What would it take to fix that so we're not interrupting classroom time?
That's a, I'll go to my pod on that one.
Yeah.
Call to the bullpen.
And I guess, I guess implicit in the question is, what's lost during that half hour, forty-five minutes?
Actually, fortunately, we don't have a whole lot of split lunches. We do have a few classes, and that's based on the schedule and related arts classes. And it looks as though, either next year or the year after, we will be able to eliminate that as we start to reduce the number of lunches that we have.
Oh, good, problem solved. Thanks.
Now, before, before we leave, as I mentioned earlier, we don't need an answer, I don't, I'm not asking for an answer, on pricing for September two thousand and twelve. And in fact, I know what I'll do, is I'll have two or three options for pricing for the board to consider. Just want everybody to know. One idea I, I'm considering is, if you looked at the chart we had, many of the schools have the high school, I'd say, a dime higher than the middle school, and then the elementaries are, so, that kind of a concept. But I'll have two or three options, say, April, when we come back to, to view it as the policy. However, since my request, recommendation, proposal, whatever, and I'll give Steve's impact if we just pay for the capital on one year, is to add it to the capital lease. Certainly, by the time we get to the public hearing, of the official public hearing of the budget, I'll need to know whether the board wishes to add any or all of our capital requests. So we have a proper number in the capital lease going forward as we vote that night to send things to the deliberative session.
Ron?
Question I have for you on that, Peter, what if it doesn't, the capital lease isn't passed? Because that's the option between the two budgets.
What do you mean if it doesn't pass?
If, if I...
You mean default versus recommended?
If it becomes the regular budget, and you don't get this, what will you do?
Then, then we, we come back to a pricing discussion on the following year, and obviously, re-prioritize. You're right, it puts, it kind of takes one or two of my options away, you're right. I know what you're saying.
Can I go?
Sure.
Again, I think this is more for Nate. One of the questions that I asked last year in April, when it was too late, is as I, as I look at the books here and the cost of labor, it becomes larger and larger each year. I see as the prices go up, inevitably, the amounts of meals go down, including the amounts of meals that are going down because our population's decreasing at the elementary schools where you have mostly your meals sold. I guess the question I have is, how can we consolidate? I appreciate the one person for three hours, but I'm looking for a lunch, a whole period gone. And multiple periods on that are throughout the district. And I know there has to be some removing of the idea, moving of the day, and I think this is the time to look at it. I think the meals are very worthwhile, I think they're necessary. However, I think it's going to be a declining group that should keep going, spiraling down. As we increase the prices up by twenty cents, and twenty cents, and twenty cents, as opposed to the minimum the government would allow us to do, our lunches are going to go down because people are going to say, it's easier for me to make a bag lunch and send it in for that cost than to have a hot lunch. And I would hate to see that happen. So, I guess what I'm looking at is, can we save additional dollars in the area of labor because of the decrease in our population?
We'll certainly have that. When we get to April, that would be obviously part of the whole package and part of the whole pricing, you know, scheme.
But, Ron, if, if your theory is correct, and I'm not saying that it isn't, I, I, no, I understand.
Here's the number of lunches that we sold over the last five years.
I understand, but if your theory's correct, and again, I'm not saying that it isn't, if the increasing lunch costs, which the federal government is mandating that we do, drive away the customers.
Yes. That's just basic economics, you know it's going to drive them away. And the government, by forcing us to raise the rates up that higher, is encouraging this to happen.
And our critical, and our critical mass decreases, our cost of providing the service increases because you have fixed costs. Nancy, did you have something?
I'm not sure I buy that argument. My son takes his lunch to school every day, and it's not the price that keeps him away from taking or having a hot lunch. I find it impossible to believe, Steve, that someone is going to say, well, I'm sorry, I'm not going to have, my kid isn't going to have hot lunch anymore because it's a dollar and sixty-five cents. Where can you, where do you know that you can go to get a lunch for a dollar and sixty-five cents? I don't know of anywhere. I'm not sure I buy that argument.
I don't think we're talking about a dollar sixty-five anymore.
Two dollars?
Well, as, well, at the moment, we have twenty cent increase. So it would be six, dollar sixty-five at the elementary, dollar ninety at the middle and high school.
And we're mandated to get to where?
Well, the dime.
Every year?
At least, at least ten cents.
At least a dime every year.
Until what?
Until we reach...
Forever.
Till we reach two dollars and...
Seventy-six cents.
Two seventy-six.
If that doesn't change.
It's actually, if I wanted to get really technical, you would reduce what we receive for a paid meal from the two seventy-six, which is twenty-six cents. So we really just need to get to two fifty.
Ooh, almost there.
But, but what is two fifty? I'm not, Nancy, I'm with you. I mean, I paid seven fifty for lunch today at Wendy's. I know it's going to increase, but, and actually, if we're spending two, if we are charging two fifty a meal, at some point, we're going to become revenue positive, correct? With what we're spending to feed them right now? Is that be correct?
Well, I mean, we're only asking for...
We're starting making money.
We're only asking for twenty cents.
But when you get to two fifty, if we're still spending a dollar seventy-five for the food and labor and everything else...
Right.
If you use that scenario.
If you use that, I'm not saying it's going to stay that way, but...
I, I guess, I take, I'll take exception to the fact is, you know, you going out to lunch and you're able to bring it is one thing, to having two or three children, and you're starting to spend ten dollars a day on a lunch, or eight dollars a day on a lunch, I think that starts adding up to forty dollars a week, a hundred and sixty dollars a month. That turns out to be some real money. And, and those decisions are the type that are, that are made. I mean, I think you've seen the decrease there, it's part population, part the economy over there with the free lunches coming up. I, I'm sorry, I truly believe, I truly believe, as the rate of price goes up, the, the amounts of meals sold because of the cost will go down.
And that was Rich's point, too, also that the free lunches will go up.
Certainly, it goes down the first year, and then maybe you get some coming back as it becomes, I'll say, common.
And we hit them with the next increase.
I guess my, my point, John, if I, just my point this year, is that I'm saying if we're going to one ninety anyway, if we can add another ten cents and just pay for this instead of paying the interest, that just makes sense to me. That's the only reason I'm bringing this up.
That's all I'm going to give.
That's the only reason I'm bringing this up, if we're going to raise them anyway.
Understand your point. Any, go ahead. Get just three curiosity points. The three-point-five million that you quoted, was that our portion of the bid for the co-op? That's the overall co-op?
That's correct.
That's the size that we're bidding out for vendors, which is why they get, we get, we get some, you know, some good pricing.
Second question, the feds dictate, you know, what the fat content ought to be. I think Chris's is probably well over the ratio. But, do you, do you do studies as to...
For the cookie.
As to what's, what is consumed and what is not? Because I know at my house, all the pizza's all gone, but the vegetables are still on the plate. So, I mean, do you monitor that?
It is a vegetable, don't you?
I have the nutritional information on every food that is served in the cafeteria. So it's constantly being reviewed, and especially by the co-op. As products become available that are lower fat, lower sodium, we do taste them and compare them to the product that we're using now, and make decisions about whether or not to add it or make that the bid item rather than offering two, say, two items of choice.
And I asked, I maybe asked it a bad way, but I mean, you know what goes on the plate, but do you know, is there any way to monitor that there are kids are actually eating the stuff that the feds say we got? I mean, I mean, it seems silly that there's probably a lot of food going to waste.
I don't think there's as much as you think, because we do have offer versus serve so that the students don't have to take the vegetable if they don't really want it. And that's why we showed up light on calories
Okay.
in the SMI review at South School.
And is, is there any student feedback as to which meals and which vendors are most popular? I know that the mantra at my house in the morning is...
Here come the Bosco sticks again.
It's my wife, it's my wife shouting up, will you eat such and such? And the kids will either yell down yes or no, and, you know, that dictates whether they're getting a meal at, at school or not. Do the kids give feedback and, you know, questionnaires or anything like that?
I get a lot of feedback from looking at the accounts that are, for instance, if it's a Gil's Pizza Day...
I've heard that name, yeah.
Yeah, it's considerably higher than a frozen pizza day.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else?
John?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
Peter, on the capital lease, what's the interest rate on that? I've done some...
Well, I used, I used three percent, but, I mean, we go out to, as you know, we'll go out to bid like in July and take, obviously, the best rate we have. Like, what I'll do is, I'll, when we come back, I'll give you what the rate was for the lease that we just, we just did now. I thought it was like three-one-nine, but...
Anyone else? I guess that's all for questions.
Great.
Thank you very much. Nancy, sorry if it, I was about to say felt like a grilling. Sorry if it felt like a...
Grilling?
Grilling. It wasn't intended to be.
I didn't get grilled, he did.
Well, I, you know...
Didn't talk much.
When we run these scenarios, and we saw twenty cents, half of just twenty cents again, you know, we weren't too thrilled in the back office either. It's, in this case, it really, I'd say a probably dime of it is the equipment. And we're just scared the death of the, the lack of cooling at the Matthew Thornton.
Sure, but, but please keep in mind that, that we here on these committees don't necessarily have the experience of having run those scenarios with you. So a lot of these things are coming to us new for the first time.
That's fine, that's why we...
So we're asking questions that you might have been through already, but we have to.
Well, we, we understand that, we're fine.
Yeah, thanks very much. Oh, let's see, next would be Peter.
Yeah, it's, we're going to, we're going to bat out of order a little bit here. We're going to go to the district office section.
You're the only one up, so you can bat any way you want.
Well, no, because I got Chuck, so, but, we'll go to the district office section, and I want to introduce, there's four of the people who work in the, in the SU office. We have Cindy McMahon and Melissa Thompson from HR. And we have Ann McAdam and Jeanette Evans from the business office. And one of the reasons why we brought them was if there are any questions that we can't answer, they probably can. But also, people call them, especially Cindy, because of the benefits administrator. It's nice sometimes to put a face to it, to a name. So, you know, there are people that, that work in the back office. We're not the teachers on the front line, but we are the support people that give everything, that provide the financial and the benefits administration to the, to the school district.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for coming, good to see you.
All right, we're going to go to the district office area, which starts on page...
The answer's in there.
Three fifty-nine. All right, now, there were, in the business, in the SU office, there's, there's three levels of administration, for lack of a better word. There's the school board level, and then there's the superintendent, and then there's the business office. And depending on the question, you'll understand why that, where that comes in bear. In the school board area, the biggest, biggest increase, probably the only increase, is in the, the fact that we are asking the school board, and I got to make sure I get this clear, because I got legal things I got to, got to, got to get over. We're asking that the clerk's salary be increased from the current ninety-nine dollars a year to a thousand. For many reasons. Before I forget, if the school board agrees with that during the budget presentation, and I will prompt you, it's part of the motion for the operating budget, somewhere in the motion has to be the word, something like, which includes an increase in the town clerk's salary, I'm just going to say a thousand just for the recommendation. Otherwise, if we don't have that as part of the motion, we have to do a separate article, if you want to do that. As long as it's recognized that the school board has reviewed and agrees that the clerk's salary should be increased, we're covered.
What are the reasons for doing this?
Let's just say that this year, we drove the clerk a baddy for ninety-nine dollars. Between the special election and all the things that we needed to bring her in and have her sign. And even though you could say this is a special occasion, when we do bond notes, or when we do the elections, whatever, there's quite a bit of hours that the clerk is involved in setting up the whole process of warning the public she's required, or he's required, to go to the election, required to go to the deliberative session. This, this salary has been there for eons and eons and eons. And the amount of work through the years that the clerk is being asked to do, I think, has expanded enough that some adjustment. I used nine hundred and one dollars to get to around number of a thousand. Ninety-nine dollars, at least in my eyes, is not a fair number, the amount of work we asked the school district clerk on an annual basis to do. That's all we got.
Okay. Anybody else? Right?
That's the school board budget, so to speak. Are there any questions on any individual lines on that one? It's fairly straightforward. We've got school board expenses, and it's not really... Audit, legal services. Okay?
I'm okay with this, anybody else?
I'm okay with this, anybody else? Okay.
Superintendent's office, the proposed budget is, all right, it's dark, the numbers are small. Two ninety-five fifty, which is, which is down two thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. And the main reason for this decrease is over the last years, if you remember, we would, we would print and, and send out the insider press. Then the last few years, we printed it and then sent it off to, uh, local, local newspaper. And now we are posting it, uh, online. So, the printing costs and all the other costs associated with the insider press going from a printing or whatever to online, uh, is, is being saved and, and being reflected in the, in the decrease in, in, in the printing line of the, of the superintendent's office.
Any comments or questions on that? Go ahead.
Can I back you up, Peter, on, up above on legal? Is that, you do a flat fee and you have somebody on retainer? Or is that just projected as to what you're gonna spend on an annual basis for legal counsel?
That's projected based on historical basis, what we think we'll spend on a, on an annual basis. And that's, that takes care of, um, any legal issues, obviously, that, that come up. Takes care of negotiations, personnel, you know, all, all the non-sped items. Legal opinions on the warrant, we'll have the warrant reviewed, uh, questions on legality of posting. For instance, this year, we did, we spent a lot of time with Gordon on the special election, the process of going through the special election.
How much variance will you see year to year?
We, we have, we've seen a variance of twenty-five thousand.
And what happens if there's a surplus, does that go back into a general fund or is that?
Well, what happens is it, it's, in reality, when the voters vote, they vote on the bottom line, uh, budget. So, what happens is on a, on a quarterly basis, I will come in and update the board on where I think the overall budget is and where are some of the problems. Uh, so if legal is running over, okay, we, we will then, we will then recognize it's going over and identify what lines or line, we, we think we've got excess funds to cover that over to. Same thing, we get into like sped or, um, tuitions or whatever.
Um, I think when we were talking about sped, they said, you know, if we don't prevail in a, a sped proceeding, we pay the attorney's fees for that family. Does that come out of this line or somewhere else?
Sped has their own, inside the sped budget, they have their own legal.
Okay.
Uh, fees for that, just for that purpose, the, uh, you know, the ongoing legal, uh, issues of, of placement. If it was a personnel issue within sped, it would come out of this, out of this line.
Right, thanks.
And then in the, in the superintendent's budget, what else we have? I don't know, I'll get in a minute. Any, any questions on the individual lines, professional services?
What's lease usage?
That would be, um, that would be the forty-four copiers that the district has. Remember, in the past years, we had the copiers' expense, both, I'll say the capital, which will be a rental, and the usage in each of the buildings. And what we decided to do was pull them all into the, um, SAU office. So, that is the, the capital, or I'll call it rental, charge of the copiers and the, the volume usage.
Is that all copies for the entire district?
Yes, yeah, there's forty-four of them throughout the six buildings.
What was the, uh, major driver on the, uh, the increase in the health insurance?
Not there yet, we got there. We're working, we're working our way down. It's just the SAU office, the, uh, from, from. From repairs and services all the way down to the dues and fees area. All right? The business office, um, the budget for the business office is, um, from thirty-one thousand, is thirty, thirty-one, is up nineteen thousand dollars. That is directly associated, I think, to John's comment, I think, at the, at the beginning of the, uh, the budget period. On the professional services, in the past, we would net the interest earned on excess funds that, that the district has with the bank service charges. And that was a, that was a revenue account. If you go back a few years, you'd see revenue of fifty thousand, sixty thousand, whatever. Since the, um, interest rates have, uh, we'll say dropped to, to near, near nothing, uh, we made a decision to no longer have a interest-bearing account. And so our fees have dropped considerably. When you wait, when we did that, you can't put a negative revenue number for bank fees in the revenue section. So, we had to move the, the gross amount of the bank fees into professional services of the business office. And that's really what, what, what drives that, that one number. Nancy.
I'm sorry to ask you to go back up to.
Okay.
The previous section, but can you please explain to me, um, the line five hundred three three zero? And it's listed, um, twice for professional nurse, legal, et cetera, fifty thousand dollar. And then, um, several other lines down, it's listed again.
Yeah.
So, is there a difference between the two?
Yeah, and, and now we, we get into the, the, the different levels of administration within the, the SAU office. What we have listed, and the, the reason for the three of them is the school board will have a professional service budget.
Okay.
The superintendent has a professional service budget, and the business office has one. And the way we've treated these is if the school board, and we did this a couple of years ago, orders the district to do a study, a survey, a project, those are the funds that would be used to do whatever survey. And remember, we did one with, um, um, when the town and school, trying to configure the town, it's, with MRI, the, the whole concept of combining town and school services, we charged the school board, it was a, I won't say it's an order, but we called it an order to, to, to undertake that study. The superintendent will use professional services for unanticipated curriculum needs. And then the business office uses it for operational, usually it's engineering studies for either construction or, um, we've got, uh, for instance, when we had the study for the oil contamination in Matthew Thornton, the study for that came, comes out of this line. So, sometimes they use, like, it's not too often that the school board's line gets used. Business office always gets used, and the superintendent's line will probably get used two out of three times a year. So, those are like the three levels of administration that are within the SAU office.
Okay, thank you.
Student transportation. As we know, um, the contract for STA Goffstown will expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. Um, we have, um, received proposals. We actually received four proposals from qualified vendors. We are prepared at this point to present our findings to the school board on the January third meeting with a recommendation for a vendor and, and enter, enter a new contract. I will tell you that the question I think came up from somebody was, are we anticipating a spike in transportation costs? And the answer is, uh, no, if our recommendation is, is approved. Um, we are gonna continue with, I'll say, thirty-six grades, one to twelve, and the six twelve six configuration for kindergarten. So, we're not recommending a decrease in the, the amount of buses.
Are we pulling out of any roads or anything that we're currently serving for any reason other than people don't live there anymore?
Um, the routes are done July, June and July.
Sure, but, but I think you know the gist of the question. Are we, we're done with cul-de-sacs and things?
I think, I think we're done with, I'll use, I, I use the phrase structural changes to the routes.
Yeah.
Obviously, the routes change as first graders come in. Six, usually it's first, sixth and ninth grade is where the routes are, routes are first established and then m- massaged to take care of the other ones. But I think we're done with structural changes of, I think we've, we've gotten, I think we've pulled out everywhere that it's, it's appropriate to pull out. In the, in this, in the, in the transportation line, there's funding for, um, trips to the vocational centers. And there's the, there's the cost of the Victory Baptist slash, um, uh, common route. This is the bus that first started out contracting with provider, in that case, for the Victory Baptist, and then has now morphed into the, the bus where special ed users for a variety of small runs throughout the day. And that's why that, that class you see that says Victory Baptist, says forty-three thousand. It's Victory Baptist, some special runs that we do for Moose Hill and other, and other students. Lot of special, special ed in district runs throughout the day. In Kim's budget, there was a line for the monitor that goes with this bus. So, in the special ed budget, there was a monitor for this bus, and I pay or the general ed pays for the transportation cost of the bus. It's cleaner, it's simpler for us.
So, are we looking at roughly the same number of buses? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
And what was the driver then for the anticipated increase need? I see it went up.
Um, I put in a seven percent factor based on what I was hearing about the market. If you remember, two years ago, when we underwent some testing for the optional two years, we were told that we were a little bit lower than, than the market. So, I put in a budget, I, I took the current rate and then had to just add it seven percent to the, um, to the, 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 the base price, base bus price.
So, you're basing it on what the market conditions are out there?
Well, what I thought, what I, what I thought they were. I, I will tell you, the recommendation is, is, is favorable to, to, to the budget as presented today.
Okay. And will we adjust the budget to reflect whatever that ends up?
Possibly, yes.
Well, that's the recommendation that I'd be looking for, yeah.
So, Peter, on, on the, the buses, when we go to contract with them, how, how does fuel play into the equation?
The, the RFP specifically noted that we're not interested in a fuel escalation clause. We're looking at, um, the fixed, I'll use the phrase fixed cost per bus for each of the years that, that we were asking for. So, if fuel goes up, their margin decreases. If fuel goes down, it, it's the, it's the, it's to their benefit. For us, as, as a round rule test, makes budgeting a whole lot easier. You don't get into the area where the fuel goes up. Now, we talk about other areas, now you're, you're paying a fuel escalating clause that you didn't budget for, and now you're looking for other areas of budget to cover it.
Um, when we, we go, now, what is it, one year or two year?
What?
The, the, the transportation contract.
It's same, the five years, five plus, five plus two option years.
Do we do anything to, let's, I'm, I'm just gonna throw this out here. Let's say fuel costs plummet. Do we have a clause in there that allows us to renegotiate fuel costs or allow them to renegotiate fuel costs? There's nothing in there?
I, I would, I would bet, uh, that fuel costs.
Won't, right, I agree.
Because if I do that, and, and I don't wanna say to be fair to the vendor, because we're, we're always looking for the district, but if I, if I ask that for the vendor, they're gonna come back and say, okay, but I, then I need something to cover me on the other side.
Um, one last question for me at least, on, on the bus, uh, contract. When do we need to have that signed by in order to have buses for next year?
Well, I'm gonna give you the, I'm gonna give you our recommendation, January third.
Right. It, is it one of these things that has to be signed by the fourth?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
When does it need to be signed by?
We've got, we have plenty of time, and we got, I mean, if, as long as we entered, if, if we agreed to enter the contract, the contract has pretty much been, been written anyways. They can have some minor changes, but any, any change would be, would be through legal, our legal service. So, it's a matter of, in, in the RFP, you know, the proposal I'm gonna give you has all the pricing that's been, been, that's been laid out and, and proposed by, by the vendor.
Understood, I'm just asking how long we have to.
Oh, I, I would, I would guess after the recommendation, probably two, two board meetings after. We're, we'll, we'll be ready to sign it.
Great, thank you. You have more, you want questions now?
On the, on transportation?
I guess, go ahead.
Todd, also in transportation?
Um, yes. Uh, actually, there's, is one more question. The question came up, um, as to, does, does the school district have to provide bus runs to private?
If they are in our district, the answer is yes.
Okay, and that's a state mandated, uh, thing?
Um, I'm not sure if it's state or federal, but it's one of them.
Okay, it, the, the point is, is we have.
I know, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, now we get into the support services area of the, um, of, of the budget. Here, we're talking really the, the benefit section, health, dental, retirement, and so forth and so on. The proposed budget for, for health insurance, um, is eight two two six six oh three. It was just up two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two ninety-six. Two sixty-nine, two ninety-six. The health insurance premiums are projected at the moment at two percent for both LGC and school care, okay? There might be an adjustment coming on, on school care. Um, the, the rates are, are, the way, the way we handle the, the calculated cost, we take the enrollment in the plans as of October, and then we extrapolate the cost for the, for the, for the premiums for the district. Couple of years ago, if you remember, we got hit with a large amount of, uh, unanticipated, uh, enrollees into the plans and had to absorb substantial amount of money throughout the budget to cover the cost. But we do this every year, it's, it's the only way we can do it that's fair. Whatever the role, whatever the participants are in the enrolled plans, times the projected cost is what, is what we, um, calculate out. Now, before we, we leave health insurance, a couple of things I, 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 I say every year and I, and I, and I need to say it. Being, being involved in, in health insurance as much as I am, and you need to understand that legendary, as a community, is well, um, well, um, versed in, in, in its health insurance programs. Wrong word to use, I couldn't think of it. Dave Karen, or the town manager, is on the, is on the Local Government Center Board of Trustees. Suzie Swenson is now the chair of school care. And myself, I am the chairman of finance for Local Government Center. So, there are three people who are heavily involved in what's called the public, public risk health insurance pools in New Hampshire. So, one of the things that we're proud about, and Suzie's gonna talk about in a minute, Suzie and I, a couple of years ago, approached school care and really pushed them to be more innovative in a wealth, in the wellness program than we, we currently run. The executive director of school care was thrilled because that's something she was trying to get, get going. And so now, when she has a client or a customer pushing them, because we get the ideas, because being board members, we get, we go to conferences or whatever. So, we absorb what's going on and the proper, and the ways that, uh, organizations should save on health insurance. You sit here and listen to other, other organizations and other, other boards, whether it be budget committee, school board, councils, board of selectmen in other towns, knee-jerk reaction to save money is, you know, increase the co-pay. And actually, Suzie and I did a study for a while. The co-pay, all that does is reduce your premiums for one year. If you increase co-pays, your, your slope, your, your line drops, but your slope for claims stays the same. I'm not gonna, I don't know all the ins and outs of school care, but I'm, I'm gonna sit here and tell you based on what I know, since I've been chair of finance for them for, for seven years. Ninety percent of the, of the cost of health insurance, and I'm gonna say for school care, I bet I'm close, in LGC is claims. Simply claims. Simply claims hitting the system that needs to be paid by the, by the insurer. If you move that claims curve, you reduce the amount of claims hitting the system, which gets back to reducing the claims or the increases in the premiums. And for the last four years, we have been significantly below the market trend for medical. Market trend for, for now, this year I believe, is ten percent. Where have, where, where, you will have, we know that LGC's, the most LGC will charge us for an increase is two, and school care will probably come in a little lower. And that's happened four years in a row. Now, I can't, and Susie can't, sit here and tell you that the wellness program is, deserves a hundred percent of it. But we would say, based on, on our knowledge as board members, this is the way to reduce premiums in healthcare, certainly over a long period of time. You may not get it the first year, second year, but if you change the habits and the patterns of, of the, of the people who work for you, then the dividends show in the premiums of health insurance increases year after year. And we know, both of us, that we're in the low, we're in the low end of, of increases. I can't tell you the number, at least in LGC, that, that got ten, twelve, fifteen percent. I don't know what they're doing, and, and they may be under, you know, circumstances involved. I know what we're doing internally is working. Want to add? Go ahead.
Thank you, good evening. I am, I am very proud about this accomplishment. Back in two thousand and six, we started what was called the LIFE program, which stands for Lower Insurance Fees Effectively. And it took forever. Cindy McMahon and, and, and Melissa, Cindy's the benefits coordinator. And you really have to get buy-in to tell people that if you, if you don't have the claims, our rates are not gonna go up. So to not have the claims, you gotta stay healthy. And so, you know, you've gotta change your habits, you've gotta, it's a whole lifestyle change. And it has taken a long time, well, since two thousand and six, but we'll have, we have our employees do a health risk assessment, they have to go online, and it gives us an idea of, of where, where are our problems in the, in the district. It's all confidential, nobody's name is put on it, but we're able to see. We have enough data now that we're seeing where things are happening, where people's blood pressure is going down, to things that isn't a problem anymore. So lifestyle changes have really done the, the key, and they realize that this, in fact, will save them money, because then their, their insurance rates will not go up. And two years ago, we had a zero increase. Last year, two percent. This year, hopefully, we might be under two again. And I don't know where in corporate America you're seeing that, it's usually a ten percent increase in health insurance. So it has been a lot of work, and Cindy's the, the, she gets on everybody's case, and it, it really has, has paid off. You gotta get the buy-in, you just, that's the whole key. But it truly is, it's on our claims.
And we had over four-hundred, four-hundred employees take the, the assessment test.
Health risk assessment, yeah, yeah.
How many total employees are on the, on the plan?
Well, I'll see.
Oh, how many total insured?
If you look at, well, I could break it down, administrators, we have, how much would you have?
Five hundred and fifteen.
Five, fifteen altogether, yeah.
So they, they get the data, they're, they're, they see where the, where the, where their weak points are, so to speak, and, and you assume they have the ability to make, or they seek advice to make changes so they live longer, live healthier. Though, oh, by the way, at the same time, we get, we both get, we do rate on premium health insurance. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of buying.
How much is paid for by the employee percent?
Mostly eighty, twenty, twenty percent.
It's an eighty-twenty split?
Yes, in, in most of the groups, right.
Do you, do you see copays going up irrespective of what Peter talked about? Is that something that's?
I, we really haven't, it, we're not discussing that at all on the plans, no.
Where do they stand now?
Uh, Jersey ten-dollar copay, yeah.
And then, uh, just a caveat before we move on. There, there are obviously some changes. This two percent incorporates minor, but still changes, that have been, that have taken effect because of the Obamacare plan. And as we know, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, that plan, if it doesn't get changed, will have a much bigger effect. But you can see, even with the two percent increase, there are some effects on the Obamacare. For example, if you get, um, if you go to get a regular physical, it, it's not considered a, a part of the copay anymore, they're, they're free. Any kind of, that kind of, what's the word?
Yeah, a wellness, if you're going for a wellness visit, like if you're going for your physical, there isn't a copay.
Where in previous years it was. And still, it's a two percent or less increase, so.
But doesn't the basic premise follow what you're saying? That a physical is intended to spot and treat problems before they get huge?
That's right, so it's an incentive to keep, yeah, exactly.
And it's a matter of just providing them with the data of their own, well, self-assessment to then act upon appropriately. And they, and they, and I would say that one step is to get the data, second step is to do it, and I think our group is doing both of those.
There are also programs that we've put in place to provide people with financial incentives for healthy behavior and, and exercise, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Which the insurance company pays, so. You know, obviously, it, it's beneficial to everybody, having healthier employees, obviously, is, is good. And we have seen many people actively involved in the programs for exercise in various ways and tracking it. And there's a mon, and for a number of them, there's basically a monetary return if they meet certain goals. They get that from the insurance company, and I think the work that Susie and Cindy and Peter have done have been exemplary in getting people on board. And I think that's really been a significant help in controlling the health insurance costs that we have.
And I, I think, and I, I have to say this, the involvement of, I believe Dave Alt is in town. The involvement that we have on our boards is significant. Like I said, we brought this to the executive director of, of school care because being on boards, we constantly go on to conferences, constantly being approached, and we understand, being on these boards, what's driving healthcare costs and, and how to fix it. So we get personal professional development by being on the boards, and then we're able to turn that around and do this kind of stuff that in the end helps, helps a district or an employee. So it's a huge benefit when we sit on these boards, especially these two, where you have such a large number of, you know, dollars being expended for, for programs.
How much of a downturn have we seen in claims out of our group based on the institutional life plan? I mean, is, what percentage are we?
Yeah, come on, too.
Could you, could you get to the microphone first, thanks?
This is Cindy.
Cindy McMahon. The wellness incentive money that they have given us has even personally changed my life, but each person, if you exercise like twelve times a month, you and your spouse get two-hundred and fifty dollars a year.
They have to be on the plan, the spouse does, yeah.
You get three hundred dollars that your family can use for classes, zumba, jazzercise, that kind of stuff. We all just finished our annual health assessments, and checks are coming from school care for a hundred and fifty dollars for the employee and the spouse if they took the health assessment. And if they did it in a certain window, they will get an extra hundred dollars in reimbursement money to use towards eyeglasses or massages or hearing aids, things that are not covered by the plan. So I personally, I think between the three hundred dollars that my husband and I are getting, I get a hundred and sixty dollars back for attending a, a class, and my hundred and twenty-five dollars came for exercise. That's a really nice amount of money I got this month. I can't stop walking because I'm not gonna get that money. So everybody is kind of starting to buy into it. And we send out a lot of email blasts, we have a lot of, we're starting an adventure in January. It's a ten-week walking program for employees. They'll get paid seventy-five dollars for completing that, but the, the schools get going together. It becomes a camaraderie building thing, too. There's walking groups, you'll see them after school, they're all out walking, and we're all just feeling better. You can just see it in the schools, people are looking thinner, feeling better, attitudes are better, and it's starting to pay off. And so claims are all completely by our rates, and our rates have not been going up the last three years.
Would our group premiums be lower if we didn't have those payouts coming back out of them?
No, because then you wouldn't have the incentive.
I think our claims would be a lot higher.
Yes.
Right, and you wouldn't have the incentive of getting people active in, in walking.
I, I understand the feedback cycle, but I'm just talking, I'm just talking flat out for the coming year. Can we, can we check a box on the form that says we're not doing this and thereby pay a bunch less?
Because then our claims will start to go back up again.
Right.
Because we're not being healthy.
So we don't have that option?
They've done that.
That incentive money I think that they give us is altogether still a lot cheaper than one emergency room visit.
Yeah, I, I'm not knocking it, I'm, I'm just asking the question, is this something?
Absolutely.
Is this an added thing that we could opt out of? Okay.
We've actually had some districts at a meeting I went to last week that are five years behind us with school care that are saying, how do we do the screenings and the assessments? So we've been doing this with them for five years as a pilot group.
Steve?
Yeah.
What are the birth rate trends in the, with the employees in the district? I know that Andy's left. I can ask that question.
We had, we, we had a two-year.
We don't need the predicate, though.
It's a two-part question.
Yes, we had a two-year kind of, well, well, two years ago, we spiked.
Right.
We had a two-year kind of state, and now we're spiking again.
Okay, so my two-part question is, what are the trends and how do those trends affect our rates?
The one thing about maternities aren't a high claim.
It's not as much as the one big claim you get.
It really isn't. Maternities, they'd rather see a lot of maternities than a lot of heart surgeries and things like that. Maternities are really a, a lower one.
It's just a premature, they're, they're out in one day.
Yeah, it really is. Just on, on your question about the, the claims, if, if I go back, I, I have, I have, I keep a chart on, on our rates since I started in two thousand, and how much they've gone up in, in school care, just on school care. In two thousand, we had a nine percent, then oh-one, we had a twenty-six percent increase, then a twenty-nine percent increase, then a nineteen percent increase. We did really good in oh-four, we had a six-point-eight. We went back up in oh-five to fourteen, and then fourteen is when we started our program. Then we went to eleven, three, five, zero, two. So it, it, the graph really does kind of show how, since we did it, it's gone down, and that's all based on claims.
But that, that graph doesn't track our premium either. I mean, it's, it sounds like.
Yeah, that's our present, that's the percent of increase in our premium.
But it does attract the, the claims?
It will.
I mean, when we've had that down.
Our increase, they're tied, they're right together.
The claims and the premium go like.
Hand in hand.
Yes, absolutely.
What we should do someday is take that graph and then trend, put it, put in line of medical trend, annual basis, and then, and then you'll see a real difference.
Yep, we can do that, yeah.
Okay.
So maybe just, so people watching, and they look at this budget line item number, and they see a, a line item number of eight-point-two million dollars and change, and divide that by five-hundred-and-fifteen people insured, if that number is correct, and you come up with fifteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars per person, per insured. What is the taxpayer, I mean, maybe you could explain what that buys? Beyond all these good things that you're talking about. I mean, I fully understand, you know, the incentives for gym memberships and, I'm not even sure if you do that, but I know they do that where I am, and things like that, because you want people to be healthy and, and, because healthier people have a fewer claims, keeps your costs down, et cetera. I think we all get that. But if you do the math and you come up with, okay, that's thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars per the insured per month, and if you just divide it by twelve, that's fifteen-nine.
Yeah.
What are they buying for that?
That, that is a cost to, to insure fifteen thousand is probably two-person.
Yeah, it's a two-person.
Probably, probably a cost of an insurance, insurance premium for, for, for two-person claim.
Yeah, well, it would work out to be about thirteen-hundred and change per month, which is usually like, well, this day and age, it's at least two, maybe, maybe a family plan you might be able to get for that. And just, if you could, just to put it in terms of, is that a good deal? How's that compare? We're self-insured, right?
We're pooled insured.
Pooled insured.
We, we insure.
You reach a limit, and then once you're beyond that, then it kicks in.
We're, we're, we're insured with the two, what, what's commonly referred to now as the five-B public pooled insurance programs. And school care and LGC only insure municipal, local governments, municipal, school, county government. That's the only clients they have. They're both member-driven, staff and, and elected officials are on the boards. So they are pooled insurances. Different thresholds are yours, depending on the size of the, of the, of the, of the, of your membership. So I know, I know if you're near the, like, one-hundred-and-fifty participants, you become more self-insured than if you had just a hundred people. So, and there, and there's a formula that the actual, we use to determine how credible your claims are on an individual basis.
So the bigger the base?
Right.
The better your rate.
And we have, the way, we have two of them, and I, I think we're the only ones that have the, both of them, and we do that for a strategic reason, which is also, I think, proven, provided dividends on our rates also.
Chris?
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on what John asked as far as the copays. Even if you wanted to turn around and make them twenty-five dollars this year, is that contractual or can you change them?
Yes.
It's negotiated on the teachers.
Yes.
When, when that contract comes up for renewal, do you see on the horizon any possibility that there'll be an annual deductible? I mean, what, what I'm seeing in the private sector is the deductibles going up. You know, the family per person, whether it's five thousand a family or a thousand per year, do you see that on the horizon for what we may be looking at?
It's all contractual.
Right, but I mean.
I mean, we could, I mean, the school board could, could propose that, and the union would, you know, would say, well, we're not for it, and then somewhere in the middle, something, and, and nothing happens. I, I think the, the, the two programs that we have now, in my opinion, provide the premium dollars for, for what we're getting. I wouldn't want to see, from what I know, and I've, I've been, like I said, chair of the, of the finance committee for seven years, a whole lot of changes to the programs we have now because of the buy-in, more, more than anything else, the buy-in of the wellness program that, that the employees are doing. And more you start tinkering with it, then you start, you start getting people to change their attitudes. And right now, knowing what plans are out there, our plans, I think, are strategically correct for the type of people that we have on the plans.
Just quickly, from a trend standpoint, have you noticed any differences in your, your mod ratings on workman's comp, like a reduction?
Coming, we're, we're coming.
But with this wellness program, that's what I'm, do you see any correlation to it?
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit?
Yeah, I'm on factor, went down this year.
Okay, John, then Ron.
So, so Ron, excuse me, Peter. New Hampshire Retirement Teachers, they had a Giants.
Are we, wait a minute, are we done with healthcare?
No.
That's, can I finish with healthcare first?
Yeah, yeah.
Susie, if I'm not mistaken, I know the health, the, uh, school care, they've increased their copays and things like that over time to keep the premium down, because that's kind of a little bit different setup than Blue Cross, correct?
Yeah. Right now, school care offers three plans that our teachers can choose from, and we do have a plan that has a high deductible that they can choose. It's, it's a cheaper cost to them. So, we do have that.
Let me go back one step. Several years ago, and, and school care is set up with, with teachers and the employees up there. It's a, it's a little different setup on there.
Correct.
And my, my understanding, going back several years ago, there was a, a situation that came up, and do we want to increase premiums, or do we want to increase some co-pays, or I think it was on, on prescription drugs? And, and, and the school care increased the co-pays, if I'm not mistaken.
With that, with our prescriptions, yeah.
Well, that happens, that happens to both.
What I'm saying is, is that's the reiterated process in there. It's not like we can go out, and let me, if I'm speaking wrong, it's not like we can go out and develop our own plan, because it's such a limited market, especially in our school care.
Yes.
There's, you've got a flavor, a vanilla flavor here to take. And on the Blue Cross, Blue Choice, you've got a vanilla program. You have A, B, and C, but it's a vanilla program. We can't say, "Okay, Lunardary School District is going to come up with this program." They took that option away from us several, several years ago when they limited the number of options that we have for health insurance. So, we have these plans that we have, but you can fit into it. Whether the teachers are in, uh, school choice or Blue Choice, that's a negotiated item. And we, we've gone to arbitration over this issue in the past, and it's been ruled that it's a negotiated item. We can't voluntary switch from one group to the other.
Without, without negotiations.
Right.
Without negotiations. We've, 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 we've gone to arbitration over that, maybe five or seven years ago over that one, or probably now it's twelve. But we've gone there. We've gone over, we've gone and did that one there. So, it's not a case that we can do something like, and make changes on that, because I've seen some of the ideas. I floated them up there, and it has to go through the organization, and they set what, what it is. And they've added benefits over times that we don't have a nay. We can't say, "No, you can't add that benefit either."
Right.
So, it's, it's a package, a canned.
I would say in closing for health insurance, I mean, the, the, the one factor that we're, that we're watching, because again, we're both there, is the, the biggest impact for the next few years on health insurance won't be health insurance. It's going to be pharmaceutical, it's going to be drugs, pharmaceuticals. And they're both, I know both school, I know school care is, I know LGC is, working on different pharmaceutical plans to, almost, almost get to your co-pay question, to force mailing, mailing, mailing of mailed order.
Mail.
Forcing generic whenever possible.
Yep.
That's, that's probably the next breakthrough, the next bulk discussion of managing health costs, the pharmaceutical costs. So, okay.
One more question. We, we had issues with, with people coming onto the plan, which was really distorting our, our budget.
Yep.
What, what do you see from a trend standpoint? What are you, what are you currently seeing from a, you know, either an uptick or a flattening? What are you seeing with the?
Well, we're, we're about, for this year, we're, we're about three or four people above what we budgeted for, which, which is, okay. We don't know, though. Open enrollment is in May and June.
In June, for July.
For this budget we're talking about. So, whatever happens to the economy, whatever happens to people's own personal lives, we'll depend, we'll find out when we get to open enrollment, how many came on or how many came off. Right now, we're only three, we're three or four above this year, so we're, we're okay.
Do you know as, as a percentage of, of all insured, how many are actually taking a, a family plan versus a, a single or adding people?
Yeah, we have it. I don't, you want those numbers now, or do you want?
No, 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 just, I'd be curious to see.
If you're going to do that, you should do no plan, too.
Yeah, no plan as well, yeah. Be interesting to see those numbers, if we, if we can track those a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have those. You want them?
I want to see them. We don't need to discuss them.
Okay, well, we'll.
We'll pass it on to you next time.
Yep.
The committees you talk about that do the studies and as to what the programs will be, is there any representation on those boards or those commit?
We're in.
Nope, nope. Let me finish a question. That are non-employees, that is, somebody who wouldn't otherwise be eligible to be in that plan, because it, it seems like there's, the folks that are sitting on the committees and deciding what the coverages will be and whether they'd be deductibles or not, putting aside the union contract things, are also the people receiving those plans. Are there any people who aren't eligible for the plans that aren't beneficiaries that are also deciding what are those programs going to be?
Essentially, you mean outside direct.
Well, we have.
Correct.
On both boards, well, in LGC, there, there are, it's made up of, I'll use the phrase, staff, which I'd be, I'd be staff. And then you got elected officials. So, John or John or Ron could be a LGC member. I know school care.
We have, we have an equal number of administrators and two employee, plus we have the president of the LAA teachers. We have other people that, that are not eligible to take our insurance.
I mean, you see the point I'm making. We're supposed to.
But I'll tell you.
We're supposed to be the, the taxpayers' advocates, so if the, the people deciding what the plan's going to be are the people who are receiving the benefits, there's a, a feeling of.
Yes, but we have people, yes, that, that are not eligible for the plan.
But I'll tell you, I understand what you're saying, but I'll tell you, and I know both of them, you're right, but when we go up there, we are more.
Oh, yeah.
Board of Directors looking out for the members, both on the benefit side, make sure that they're getting good coverages, but also we're looking out for the best price to pay. And in fact, I think both of them, the motto is best product for the best price.
And in fairness, I think it's probably inarguably below what we'd be paying for Blue Cross or a private insurer, but it's just a question of.
And we do test the market, not, not a formal. We'll go out and test and see what others going on. And, and we haven't, we haven't had a reason for a while to, to, to go out, because we know that we're, we're, we're much better, much lower than, than the privates can give us.
Yeah.
And I think mainly because of the pooling that takes effect. And keep in mind, both organizations, we only deal with local government people. So, the diversity of people out there is finite compared to what the privates would have. So, when we talk, when Ron talks about the programs, some of them are tailored to meet the specific needs of school, teachers, police and fire, whatever. We'll take the package and then change it a little bit to better suit what, what goes on in, in local governments, which is why I think in the end, we're, we're always at a better price than what the privates, you know, Signor and Blue Choice and Anthem can give us.
Because I think the tension that I hear from constituents and just people, you know, across the board is that in the private sector, salaries are down, insurance payments, whether it's co-pay, deductibles and premiums are all way up.
Yeah.
And they look at the public sector and say, "People's, you know, salaries are contractual and they've stayed the same, and the, and the health insurance stayed the same." And that's where I, I hear the, you know, kind of the.
Right. And, and I would argue that if our wellness plan.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't, didn't, didn't work.
Yep.
And our rates were going up ten, twelve, fifteen, we would be in that boat of, okay, since you're not willing to do this, our only choice then is. But right now, since they're doing it, I can't think of a, a private sector where the, the rates are two, two, zero, and whatever.
I'd also interject that contracts, right, may, may define these things, but contracts come up for renegotiation and expire every three years. The teacher's contract is up this year. I guess the bottom line to what you're saying is if the taxpayers don't like the level of benefits negotiated into the proposed contract, the ultimate recourse is to reject the proposed contract, so.
Well, not to be too flip, but it'd be with the ballot box with you guys. I don't think the, you know, if it's a, if it's on the ballot, they can then vote it, but.
But it is.
Yes, yes. But I'm saying, ultimately, that's something that's negotiating, not by the taxpayers, just put to them to, to pass, yea or nay.
True.
Yeah.
But if it doesn't pass, that would be an indication that there was something in it the taxpayers didn't like.
Correct. I'm just saying that sometimes, you know, there are some alternatives that, during the negotiation, negotiation process, that maybe need to be out there.
Ron?
Susie, how does our co-pay compare with the rest of the state? With the, the T, I'm talking about the employee, employer contracts, the, the break.
You mean the eighty-twenty?
Yes.
Oh, we're.
Much higher.
We're definitely, the, the teachers here pay more than, than other districts. A lot of them are ninety, ninety-five percent. We're one of the, the low.
I would say the average is probably ninety, ten.
Ninety, ten, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on this topic? Okay, go ahead.
All right. We're, we're gonna, it's nine o'clock. We got buildings and grounds to go through still, so I'll, I'll go as fast as I can, maybe not so quick.
Are we, are we still covering the district office?
Yeah, we're still in the benefits area.
Okay, go ahead.
Like easy one, dental, the, the premium's flat.
He's going to touch on it.
Okay?
And the dental, is that part of the twenty-eighty percent? Is that included? The dental premium?
Dental is a hundred percent covered by the district, is what you're asking?
Yeah, there's no participation by the employee, employees?
Yeah, seventy-five, twenty-five.
Oh, that's right.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Life, uh, life's medical and Medicare and, well, just taxes, you know, on payroll, retirement. Okay, see, retirement is down, and the reason retirement is down from the current budget is, going back in August, they gave us, we started earlier, they gave us a rate of about eleven percent, okay? And then they've readjusted their rates to the, to the, to, to a, I'm sorry, was thirteen, is now eleven. So, when you look at retirement with, it's a two-year rate, so the rate hasn't changed from this year and the current year, okay? And when you have small decreases in, in salary, that also plays into it. The major factor is that this budget, the amended budget for FY12, was based on a little bit higher rate for retirement than what we have now going in FY13. That's the easiest way to, to describe this. It's a two-year, the way, the way the retirement system works, it's, it's a two-year rate. So, every two years, they, they review it. Now, you need to keep in mind that there are still litigation going on regarding the rates that we're currently paying. Also out there, as you know, the employees' rate went up two percent, but they don't, they, they haven't fully calculated what effect that two percent on employees will have yet. So, the, based on that calculation, which I think is due to come out in January, maybe February, we may have another rate adjustment. Could be up, could be down. We don't know yet. So, we keep that out there, but we go by what we know today. And the rate that we know today is what we base the retirement costs, given the percentage of the salaries that are eligible for retirement.
Are we doing anything in terms of preparing or reserving or accruing a little something to, a little extra funding somewhere, so that if there is an increase, you don't have to go back? There's no way to, to, to reserve or put a set?
Well, I can't reserve it like, the way, the way, the way you want me to. I just, I just have to hope that the rate as it sits now doesn't change a whole lot, up obviously, and that we're able to absorb it through the, through the normal budget process.
Is there, so you have to go with that rate that's set?
Yeah.
And it's a two-year window?
This year and FY13. FY14, for those who are here next year, the rate will change. It'll be the first of, of another two-year biennium.
So, we don't, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to see if there's a way to avoid a like situation that just happened with that one point one million that we were short. There's a, oh, no, now we got to go and go back to the taxpayers and ask for more.
Right.
If there is a way to reserve some way, if there's no way to, to do something like that.
I mean, the only way that could happen, Tom, would be if they, they made, if, if they did a calculation on the two percent, and we know what that effect is, and we get to, we get to the deliberative session, and the board says, "Okay, based on this, the new rate that retirement gave us, I need to add fifty thousand to budget to cover." After the deliberative session, though, it's up to us to find whatever funds we can in the operating budget.
Yeah, so, so other things wouldn't happen.
Right.
So, you could use those funds to pay for a shortfall.
Yeah, but I couldn't, I can't reserve it. I can't do a reserve just in case. I don't have that luxury.
Nancy?
I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's just a related, it's just a related point. Last year, the news came three days after the deliberative session.
Yes.
So.
Right. And it got worse all the way to June.
Nancy?
We match, we match what an employee contributes to their retirement or not? Like a 401K?
No, it's, it's set by, it's set by, set by state law.
Okay.
What employee or employer contributions are.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, did you? Okay, Peter?
The only one I really wanted to cover of the benefits is workers' comp. We are, we are hoping through the various training programs, including the wellness, but also training programs, I'm talking about training proper ways for the custodial staff to mitigate as best they can back injuries from lifting properly. We have a safety committee that goes through the buildings, reviews certain things that may cause injury or not cause injury. Our mod factor, to get to a point, dropped this year, and so I am hoping that that factor continues and our mod factor drops a little bit more, and that's what the workers' comp budget is based on. If it doesn't, then I've got to find money somewhere else to cover it. The only other thing I, I'll go over, well, that would benefit, the debt service, we did give you a, a debt schedule that went out to two thousand twenty-two or something. The only thing you really want to know about in this one is FY18, I believe, is the year that we lose our first, our next principal payment. I mean, the debt schedule is what it is.
Anything from anybody? Is that it from you, Peter, on the district?
That's the district office.
Okay. Let me, let me ask for a guesstimate at this point. We've been two hours on two subjects, and we have four remaining. How many, the, how long do you think it will take to get through those?
We'll get them done.
Okay.
We, we might go five minutes past ten, but we'll, we'll get them. Revenues is quick. Capital leases should be quick. We're already going over, really buildings and grounds.
Fine. Carry on.
Just as well. We really don't want to come to twenty-second if we don't ask you.
No, we don't.
Sir? He's at four. Okay, I was up here a few weeks ago, I guess towards the end of October, and kind of talked in detail about the organization, Buildings and Grounds Department, our responsibilities, what we did. So, tonight, I'll just kind of give a quick overview and get right to the budget. I can talk about the budget, maintenance trust, and any other questions you might have. Lunardary School District Physical Plant is one of the largest in New Hampshire among public school systems. We have eight buildings, total nearly six hundred ninety thousand square feet, and over two hundred acres of grounds and playing fields. Operating budget, Buildings and Grounds, approximately a hundred and thirty accounts. They're on pages five thirty-six through five fifty-one in the budget book, and include maintenance, supplies, and utilities. The operating budget request is two million, one hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars, which is an increase of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand from the current fiscal year. And most of the increase is due to three items. District-wide construction, ninety-seven thousand dollar increase, property and liability insurance, seventeen thousand, and cell school fuel oil, fifteen thousand dollars. Last year, we, we. Last year, we, we talked quite a lot about alternative fuels, different things you could do at cell school. It is the only building that still uses fuel oil, all of the others been converted to natural gas. And, uh, about a month or so ago, uh, we finally received a report from engineering company, looked at alternative fuels, uh, wind power, ground source heat pumps, uh, solar, biomass, and photovoltaic electrical systems. The, the only one that was even close was the biomass evaluation, which is wood chips or processed wood pellets. And even that was sixteen point nine years, straight line payback, uh, which didn't include price increases or maintenance. Uh, one thing that did come out of the report, though, is, uh, the, the biomass didn't really make sense at cell school because the building is so small and the amount of fuel we, we would need is so small, relatively speaking. And what we're looking at now is the possibility of a biomass or a, a wood source heating system located in the area of the high school, the central campus, which would be able to service through underground piping, uh, middle school, Matthew Thornton, Moose Hill, and possibly the buildings over here. Uh, so we should have information on that next couple of months, and can probably address that sometime in the future, if it, if it makes sense.
Do we have the piping?
No, all of this would, would be from scratch.
Okay.
One thing I did wanna mention, uh, a few years ago, uh, we saw some of our costs really skyrocket due to the seasonal flu, uh, flu and H1N1. Uh, hand washing, we, we couldn't get enough soap and, um, uh, dispensers and antiseptic, uh, in the schools. In fact, there was a shortage for a while, and it became almost a black market. And, uh, I remember being on the phone on the computer for weeks and pretty excited when I found a pallet of hand soap down in Tampa, Florida, we were able to, to get pretty quickly. Things have settled down since then, uh, but the students, the staff have certainly gotten the message. And annually, we're now spending about twenty thousand dollars more than we did just three years ago for soap, hand sanitizer, uh, hand towels, trash bags, and, and water, kind of interesting. The operating budget, uh, just about fifty percent or just under fifty percent, approximately one point one million dollars is for utilities, which would include electricity, gas, oil, water, sewer, and telephones. Uh, we're in the twelfth year of our energy conservation program, and total cost avoidance to date is a little over four million dollars. We did hit the four million dollar mark earlier this month. Uh, June of two thousand and eight, we received the Energy Lighthouse Award, which was Nat- National Recognition for our efforts. And just a few weeks ago, we received the Chairman Sustainability Award, which is given to school districts who have kept their energy conservation programs in place for at least ten years. Uh, last December, five of our schools earned the Energy Star Award, and we joined an elite group of less than five percent of public schools in the United States. Our utility costs per square foot are among the lowest of any school in New Hampshire, and I haven't seen the, uh, the update for the past quarter, but we could be the lowest. Uh, after paying for utilities, balance of the money in the operating budget, spent on supplies, repairs, small equipment purchases. Supplies would include ice melt, grass seed, fertilizer, and field paint for outdoors. And for inside, custodial, cleaning, sanitary products, and we bid out all of our custodial supplies. Repair accounts are just that, plumbing, heating, ventilation, electrical, lighting, air conditioning, air filters, windows, doors, fire alarms, intrusion alarms, video security systems, traffic and parking signs, locks and keys, elevators, uh, roofs, roof leaks, painting, and wallboard repairs. Uh, also contained within the operating budget is an account called District Wide Construction, and this funds special, uh, planned projects, usually completed during the summer. A list of the projects are on pages five twenty-nine, five thirty, uh, that we're planning for next summer. Uh, this list was put together beginning about four months ago, so as we go through the next six months, if our needs change, uh, the items on the list may change. Uh, although the, the total cost of the items in this account is almost a hundred thousand dollars more than last year, uh, represents less than one half of the original requests. Uh, in the capital lease accounts, requested equipment such as a replacement one-ton truck for the grounds department, and some new and replacement equipment for buildings and for the custodial department and building maintenance department. Uh, all of these items have an expected life of at least five years, most are probably closer to ten years. And finally, uh, maintenance trust fund is funded through a separate warrant article, pays for large, one-time projects such as paving, roof replacement, HVAC upgrades. Uh, page five thirty-one in the budget book has information about the maintenance trust fund, including the projects that were completed this past year and the ones we're planning for next year. I wanna mention, uh, again, this list was put together a couple of months ago. Since then, uh, we've hired a contractor, an engineering company, we've done some test pits over Matthew Thornton in preparation for the, uh, the paving project there. And what we found are some, uh, some subsurface products, uh, which they're called unsuitables, which would have to be removed, and, uh, found groundwater at a depth of only two feet, and this was not totally unexpected. We ran into very high levels of groundwater over the high school paving project. So as a result, a great deal of drainage and replaced materials are needed for the product, for the project. Uh, the original price, which we thought would be about five hundred and fifty thousand, is now pegged at seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, so if you have questions about the budget or the trust, or the lease items?
Sounds like my driveway. Uh, questions, anybody?
Chuck, did you say?
Yeah, Chuck, don't tear up your, don't tear it up until you make sure they're gonna clear them.
Hey, no, wait a minute, they, they tore it up, I didn't. Go ahead.
Chuck, you mentioned the insurance went up by about seventeen thousand dollars?
Uh, property liability insurance, yes.
Why was there such a big increase in that, or it seems like a lot of, a delta for, for one year?
It just, I, if I remember correctly, it's, it's a four percent increase.
Okay.
I'm talking, I, I can't remember if we added anything. I know the previous years, we went back, we, we, we added a lot of grounds.
Um, we, we, we ran into some claims, pretty heavy-duty claims the past couple of years. Uh, one of them was a result of the windstorm, and I think what we found in that is a lot of our outbuildings, uh, press box, bleachers, playgrounds, were not covered in the original policy, so we did have to, have to increase for, for those items.
Okay, so, so we increased our coverage for the outbuildings.
Chris?
Replace exterior doors in room three oh one and three oh two, forty-three hundred dollars per door. What, are these computer rooms, are they security doors?
Well, um, that's a, if, if you look through the list, that's a pretty typical cost for a three-foot, uh, steel fire door, security door, uh, with a six-foot frame. So it would be a larger frame, uh, that would have some windows on it.
I just saw the garage door on the next page for sixteen hundred, and I was like, wow!
That would, that would be more typical of a, a regular type garage door, it's a security garage door. Uh, but over the past few years, for the steel exterior fire doors, uh, prices in the thirty-six hundred to forty-three hundred dollar range.
And that's for these computer rooms?
Those, those are not, those are classrooms with, um, exterior exit doors.
Those outbuildings weren't covered at all, or weren't covered to sufficient coverage limits?
They, they weren't, uh, we, we had a general policy for the grounds, which covered up a certain amount, but in order to get full coverage on, on everything, we had to list all the products.
Because they weren't inventory?
Right.
Right, uh, for example, playground, which you may not think of, uh, being a lot of money, uh, playgrounds in the district are valued at about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Based on equipment?
The structure.
Additional questions for Chuck?
I have one.
Yes?
Um, on page five hundred and thirty, under Matthew Thornton, you have lobby bathroom renovations for four thousand dollars. Is this Carol's bathroom?
Geez, buy her a door, they're cheap.
You gonna finally fix her bathroom?
No, that's.
No.
We might, we might in a minute.
That's a very.
Home improvement show for Carol, the bus roll up for her.
Extreme makeup.
Guys, go ahead, go ahead, Chuck.
Uh, that, that would be a worse case if we don't get money for anything else. That would be some money, uh, to cover some plumbing upgrades and, uh, to replace the partitions.
Jeez, and it's gonna cost us four thousand dollars to maintain her bathroom?
And we'd like to bring this up, uh, at the time, but I think we can get through this. Remember what Chuck has said, that in order, and this is really to do phase one of, of the paving at Matthew Thornton, we're looking for an additional hundred thousand. If you look at the maintenance trust, then we're doing one project out of the maintenance trust. That's it. We brought up to you a couple of years ago, the option, and I'm gonna use that as an option again, of a, uh, and it's in our capital improvement plan, of a district-wide renovations bond. We have identified with our architect, somewhere in the order of two million dollars of renovations needed at Matthew Thornton, plus the million dollars that we estimate due to the entire paving at Matthew Thornton. The problem we're having is, and this is just for discussion, and certainly can brought up, uh, now with the January fifth meeting, the maintenance trust, at its current level of funding, can't keep pace with, I would say, the capital maintenance items that the district is facing. And when I say capital maintenance items, I'm not talking about the bathroom doors or whatever, we're talking roofing, paving, boilers, carpet replacement, um, renovations to, to, in this case, Matthew Thornton. Doing a quick analysis, we figure that if at some point, whether it's this year or next year, some sort of renovation bond is impold, we're probably looking at spending about two, two and a hu- two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand over the next six years at Matthew, at Matthew Thornton to, to do all the renovations that we're talking about. The real, the only, the real reason I bring this up for the board to discuss, deliberate, whatever, really three factors. The needs that we feel, especially in Matthew Thornton, with the interior renovations, the paving, the boilers, and you can see the list on, on the, that Chuck has. Combined with the, the other two factors, that being, um, what we're being told over and over by experts in the field, architects, engineering firms, um, that you can get what, what, what they refer to as seventy, seventy-five cents on the dollar for, for construction now. Meaning, uh, normal years, when things are doing well, you get a dollar for dollar. You, you're now getting seventy percent bids for construction renovation projects because they're hungry for, for business. On top of that, I would, I would argue that the cost of borrowing for municipalities is probably at its all-time low. I have never seen it this low. Evidence that the town, I believe, went out for the road bond over the summer, and their interest rate was two point one. I understand that you could say it's late in the game. We've had this, we brought this up before, and the only reason why we're bringing it up is because we feel that the needs, the needs outstrip the, what the ma- the maintenance trust fund can fund, pay for. And the cost of borrowing and the so-called seventy cents on the dollar for construction. You'd be, it'd obviously be a multi-year bond. We assume the economy at some point will get better, and over ten years, it's probably gonna get better, go down, get better again. We'll look at this as it's a need, take advantage of the two markets, and, and get the projects done at a cheaper price of borrowing money and, I'll say, materials, for lack of a better word.
Steve?
I'm, I'm sorry, is this bond in the capital improvement plan?
This is out there in, in FY fourteen, fifteen?
Yes.
And, and what we discussed was the possibility of bringing it in only because of the market conditions, of the bond interest, and the, uh, cost of materials of all construction. If it wasn't, if both were not, were in present, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even bring this up tonight. But I thought it was at least my, our job to at least bring it to your attention to, to, you know, discuss and come back later or not.
Yeah, um, I, I can understand. There are a lot of vendors that are hungry out there, but there's, uh, some family and homeowners that are hungry too. So.
Anybody else on this point? John?
Chuck, can you, can you do me a favor, looking through the, uh, the detail? I summed up your radios and your communications and your cell phones. It came out to almost forty-two thousand dollars. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, um, se- two, two separate items here. The, uh, the, the cell phones are in the buildings and grounds budget, uh, but they are, uh, assigned to most of the administrators in the, in the district. Uh, the walkie-talkies, the two-way radios, we actually have a couple of hundred of them, uh, throughout the district, and they're used for a number of different things, uh, from communicating among staff members to, uh, other administrators, to custodians, to playground, safety, uh, that sort of thing. Uh, the, the big problem we're having, uh, uh, one of the main reasons for the, the, uh, big expense is the FCC, um, has enacted a narrowbanding law, which means that they're restricting the amount of airways that are available, uh, for common people, uh, for, uh, regular, unregulated use. And, uh, a lot of our radios are outside of that narrow band. So the, the ones that can be reprogrammed will be, uh, the ones that cannot be, can no longer be used, so they'd have to be replaced. So there are costs associated with that. And then also, we have to obtain a license for the frequency that we will be using. We'll only need one for the, the entire dis- district, even though we might have a couple of slightly different frequencies, uh, just so we don't have traffic interfering between schools.
That's, and, and when, when do we have to have they replaced?
Um, the, the law takes effect in, uh, January of two thousand and thirteen, so it would be during the, the next fiscal year.
And if we, we don't comply?
My understanding is there are fines of up to a thousand dollars a day per device. Uh, I don't think they would assess those fines, I think they would tell us we can't use the radios anymore.
Um, and the cellphone budget is also in his budget? That's twenty-two, six, is that right? Well, you have it, you have it as cell phones, and then you have pagers, walkie-talkies, and?
Right.
So?
Yes, so, cell, cell phones are approximately fourteen thousand dollars a year, and we do receive some, uh, E-rate offset, so the, the net is probably around ten or eleven thousand dollars. And that's for twenty-four, um, telephones.
Sixteen thousand dollars for twenty-four telephones?
It, it comes out to just under fifty dollars a month per, per phone.
Who's our carrier?
Uh, it's Verizon Wireless. We, we receive a.
What else works?
Pretty, pretty good municipal rate. I think the, the regular rate is eighty-nine dollars a month.
Eighty-nine dollars a month for what, data, data text and? We need all that in the, the school?
For everything. I speak for myself. I was one of the last people to buy into the idea that we needed them, and I don't know how I would get along without them. Uh, all of the, our telephone calls that come into, uh, the district office, uh, immediately forwarded as an email to our telephones. All of the emails in the office come to the phones. Uh, the texting, the emails, the, the past couple of storms that we had over the past few years, wouldn't have been able to, to run the operations without them. One, one of the, uh, and I think it's pretty common in the community, when we opened the shelter, uh, the biggest demand was for plug strips so people could come in and recharge their, their telephones.
Yep, thank you. Car chargers, people. Anything else? All right, I guess that's it on that. Thanks very much, Chuck. Thank you. Peter?
Our next topic will be the revenue section, and that starts on page-
Page six.
Page six. This is a first. I would never do this with Anita. We're going to try, we're going to turn revenues over to Lisa, and let her do a little talking for you.
Okay. If you go to page six in the budget book, the tax rate calculation sheet will list out the revenues. The overall total revenues for FY 13, and I'm excluding the lease proceeds out of all these discussions, is slightly increased by $239,750. State revenues are increased by $254,286.
Lisa, give us one second to get caught up with you up here.
Page six.
Page six.
Six.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
State revenues are increased, mainly due to the state property tax, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Local revenues are decreased by about $100,000, and fund balance, we're budgeting to increase about $85,000, and I'll go through each of those in a moment. If we start with state revenues, catastrophic aid, we have level funded this program. The information we have right now is that the state will fund it at about 60%. This has declined over the past few years. In FY 09, they funded it at 90%, FY 10 at 85%, FY 11 at 77%, and we're hoping for this year that they'll fund it at 60%, and we've budgeted that into FY 13 as well. But it's still to be seen, we don't know for sure where they'll fund that. School building aid, we have funded at 100%. To our knowledge at this point, the state will be paying us 100% of their commitment on our prior building aid. Again, this is another program that's questionable for the future, but for right now, all the information we have is that they will fund us on their prior commitments. State adequacy is level funded. As Nate often talks about, this is a program where the future is in question, but all the information for FY 13 budget is that they will fund it level with this year's budget. The state property tax has an increase of about $307,000. This has an offset tax rate of 19 cents. The state tax rate went from $2.20 to $2.39. So although we have an increase in revenue, there's an offset increase in the tax rate. So it's really not more money, it just appears that way in the revenue section. Medicaid, we've budgeted a decrease of $50,000 to more accurately reflect the actual receipts we receive from this program. These sped department bills to maximize the funding in this program, and we get as much money as we can. Vocational transportation, we're budgeting a decrease of $3,000, another state program where they've been cutting over the years, and we're, actually, I just got that check this past week, and $17,000 is what we got for this year. So we're projecting that we will get the same for next. Moving on to the local receipts, impact fees, we have budgeted at zero. We do believe that there'll be enough money from the town to cover the $100,000 that we have budgeted in the current year, but we do not believe that there will be money to fund any money into the FY 13 from the town. Pupil activities is level funded. That includes gate receipts, textbook replacements, that sort of thing, money collected from students, and that is funded at about $20,000. Then we go on to tuition, and we have, well, I think we reduced that by $500, basically level funded that. That line includes money collected from LEAP, summer school, adult and alternative ed, and then tuition we collect from a few neighboring towns who send their students here to the high school. We have four regular ed students attending the high school, and we have two sped students that we do bill out for in the tuition line. Community activities is level funded at about $60,000. That's money we get for use of our facilities. We expect that to remain the same. And then fund balance, we have funded at about $400,000, which is an increase of about $85,963 from the current year. We expect at this time to be able to return that money next year to offset the tax rate with added money we got from, for New Hampshire retirement this year from the special election. We think that we'll be able to return that next year. And I'm sure Peter will report on his second and third quarter reports if there's any change to that, but at this time, that's what we believe we'll get. So that totals about, as I said, a $239,750 increase in revenues for FY 13. Any questions?
Thank you, questions?
Lisa, just a clarification, when you said the community activities, that's not from renting out the building, that's just reimbursement for the services that we're offering?
Yes.
Use of facilities, right.
Yes.
Not profit.
It's not, it's not a profit that we're getting money, this is just reimbursement-
Reimbursement of direct costs, usually, usually custodians, any kind of supplies that may, that may be used. But it is revenue that comes in, so we have to-
No, no question, I just wanted to clarify.
Anne?
Yeah, speaking of revenue, where would the revenue that we receive from, for example, the churches, where would that be?
Use of facilities.
That's use of facilities.
Yes, thank you. Community activities.
Okay.
Anybody else? Great, thank you, nice job Lisa.
The only left is capital leases, and I think we've gone over the individual items as each individual has come up and presented their budget, they have identified their own items that are, that are in the lease. I don't know if you have any questions that you've seen, or items that haven't been discussed?
Any questions or discussion on capital leases? I think we're good on that for now. Anything else from you Nate? Peter? Budget committee?
I think Steve has something.
Steve?
Nate or Peter, if you wouldn't mind, just a recap of the original numbers that you discussed when we started this, so that we can leave with that. Page 20 something.
The budget that we proposed is $64,890,879. That represents a 0.77% increase, or converted to dollars, a $497,942 increase over the FY 12 budget, which is also $306,209 below the default budget.
Anything else? Chris?
Just a quick question Nate, because you were talking about this earlier, a couple of us among ourselves, especially with the quorum this year, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, we don't have a quorum coming up for the deliberative session. Do you have a backup plan, assuming somebody does show up and take $500,000 out? Have you looked at what we may lose if that were to happen?
What we, what we would do is normal prac, in normal practice, is develop what we would consider be a, a cut list. So if somebody said, what would happen if we reduced your amount by $400,000, just for the sake of argument, then we would have a prepared list and say, these are the items that we would consider for reduction. I wouldn't necessarily bring it out unless the issue came up. That list, to a degree, would, would be different based on what the final number is here. So what I'm assuming is going to happen after everybody ruminates over the, over the information you have, and we come back on June 3rd at the regular board meeting, there would be some discussion, the board might say, geez Nate, we heard what you had to say, and the administrators had to say, we'd like to increase your, tell me what you would get with another million dollars. Or they might say, what recommendations would you make if you had to reduce the budget by $100,000 or $200,000? So obviously, and I'm not advocating any of that, but let's say, for, just for the sake of discussion, was $100,000, then my backup plan would be, all right, if that's the number we settle with, if, what other reductions would we recommend in the case that someone said, well, at the deliberative session, what would happen if? Okay, or that, so what we would just do as pro forma is say, okay, generally in $100,000, $100,000 cuts, here's, here's where we'd go. I wouldn't, you know, the depth of it would, would be a guess on my part as to, you know, how much of a reduction people might discuss, but we just do that as, as a normal course of action.
So you do have it in your back pocket in case it comes up?
Yeah.
Isn't that something that every manager and every organization in the world does?
Yeah, so, you know, we'd have that, and, you know, what would happen if?
Do you know-
Hang on, hang on please. Okay, go ahead.
You must have an idea in, in keeping your back pocket, a threshold point where you know full well that if somebody came in with some absurdly large number to cut, that you just simply couldn't go there because of the requirements of a minimal education, and I don't like to use minimal education, but for lack of a better word. In other words, if somebody came in with some absurd number and said, all right, I, you know, cut $2 million out, where's the threshold, I guess, would, might be a, a thing to think about, and maybe you don't need to answer it now, but something to think about, because at some point, I envision somebody coming along and maybe throwing an absurd number out there that we may need to address, as to how that would, that would happen, because the bigger the number, obviously, the longer the list of cuts, and the scarier that list gets.
Yeah, I, let me just, I'm not going to give you, I can't pull notes-
Sure, sure.
But just some things that people have to keep in mind. Basically, 80% of our budget is personnel related, okay? Then you have another sizable percent, as Chuck just went through, several million dollars in utilities, heat, et cetera. I mean, you've got to heat the buildings, so on and so forth. Then you have transportation are involved, and then the other things, paper, pencils, books, other contractual agreements that we, that we may have. So there's basically very little wiggle room. When you start to talk big dollars, there really is only one place to go, personnel in one form or another. So it's, you know, it's instruction related, administrative related, co and extracurricular related, because basically every aspect of that is impacted by personnel. So, and just giving you an example of what a cascading impact could be. Let's say we had some huge number, I said, okay, fine, then what we're going to do is cut out third shift to custodians at the high school and the middle school. So what does that mean? I close the buildings down, basically, pretty much right after the kids leave, because we now don't have a third shift that can clean up after the 150 activities that we have on a weekly basis in school after hours. Right? Our primary concern, obviously, is having a clean facility when the kids come in. So that has an impact. You cut custodial staff, maybe you wind up having to cancel school on a day you wouldn't have to cancel school, because I can't get the parking lots cleaned, because I don't have enough people on Sunday to come in and clean up the parking lots. Do I significantly increase class size? Yep, so what does that mean? Instead of having 20, an average of, let's say, for, what I use for capacity numbers, an average of 23 and a half, now I go to state minimum standards. I put 30 kids in grades three, four, and five, and 25 kids in grades one and two. You can pick up money that way, I don't think people would be too happy. I could go to the, to the state requirement on transportation, basically say, we're not providing school transportation for high school level kids. If you want transportation, we will come up with a fee structure and you can pay to have your kid ride a bus, because legally, I'm not obligated to do that. I mean, these are kind of draconian things. But let me just take a step back. I think, and I'm sure not everybody agrees, I, I think that over the, over the years, we have made a concerted effort to run a lean operation and respond to changes in the economy, and also declines, changes in enrollment. I'll go back to what I had said in the opening day. Since '06, we have dropped a certified position, meaning teacher or administrator, for every 20 student drop in enrollment. We have dropped a non-certified position for every 12 and a half student drop in enrollment. We have cut 18% of our administrative staff. People have doubled up on assignments and picked up additional assignments. So I think we're running kind of lean. I think we're still doing a good job. And not once, I don't think, did anybody hear any of us whine about it. And say, you know, and basically it was, and I think I may have used this, this term in public, was step up and suck it up. And that's what people have done. I'm very proud of my administrative staff, the guidance people, and the teachers. They really have done that. But, as you know, in any organization, you reach a point of diminishing returns. Now, can we run with less teachers and less administrators? Sure, as long as, in fact, you accept a decline in the level of services. And I don't have people coming to me in October and saying, I'm really concerned because there's 30 kids in my class. Well, if that's the amount of money you voted for, that's what you're going to get. Right? Not saying this is a threat or anything, it's just a fact of life. So we, I think we put our priorities where they are. We've maintained class sizes at levels that I think people have been accustomed to, and educationally appropriate. We have maintained offerings and options and programs and co extracurricular programs that we think are important for the kids, and we've been able to maintain that throughout. People picked up additional, additional responsibilities and have carried through, through on them extremely well. We met, we've put in place cost savings measures to, one, be a more efficient operation, and also offer, if you want to call it that, relief to taxpayers. Kim's address, in, since we've put in place, in the last six, seven years, $36 million in special ed savings, Chuck's $3 million plus in energy savings, the cost savings that Sean mentioned in IT and so on. So I think we, we've been diligent in doing that. Now, are there other ways to save money? I'm sure there are more, and we're constantly looking at it, but we've made a diligent effort, even down to the smallest things. Fact that we have an inventory of all our desks and chairs, so if, if in fact, we have, we have a change in enrollment at Matthew Thornton in North, we know that Mary has a couple of third, uh, desks that are appropriate for third graders, we just ship them over, so it's not a knee jerk, well, I need three more of these desks. Have we come up with some creative ways, you know, that benefit kids too? Just the computer building program alone, we save $300 a machine, we give kids a great experience, and we pay them to do that. Everybody wins. Everybody wins. And as Sean had mentioned, we got less breakdown on the machines the kids build than the ones we buy in the boxes. Yeah, that's not a bad deal. You know, the other thing too, I mean, just that our savings to the taxpayers, the articulation agreements that we have with colleges and universities have saved, actually saved parents now millions of dollars, literally millions of dollars because of scholarship money that they've received through those programs. Then on top of that, you've got Project Running Start, the AP courses, those also save parents' money when their kids go off to school. And it's not just the high-end colleges too, because we have articulation agreements with the community colleges. So kids that are interested in going to a community college, some because that's the specific career path they want, or some who want to use that as a stepping stone to a four-year school, now also have an advantage of getting scholarship money or a discount on tuition because of those articulation agreements. So if you look at it as a systemic approach, I think we've tried to do that. We've tried to grow our revenue, if you want to call it that, in a variety of ways, and curtail our costs, to, and provide a quality program and services. But as we all know, you know, you can cut back on the amount of oats that you give the cow, but after a- the cow, but after a while, you cut back on the oats, you're going to get less milk. You know, so the issue, the issue is, you know, feed the cow appropriately, and you're going to get the appropriate milk.
It's raised on a farm.
I watched The Modern Farmer when I was a kid. It was on Channel Nine, six o'clock.
But thank, thank you for that commentary, because I think it's important for people to understand, if you're thinking about coming to the table with some drastic suggestions, there's serious repercussions for that. I think what you see in this district is you get a real strong bang for your buck, good return on that tax dollar in the form of what the students get out of it. We educate the students in this community extremely well with a great district that I wanted exactly what you gave was, a good rundown of how well, a well-run lean, in terms of the manufacturing term lean, Six Sigma-like system, that's what you run here in the district. And I think it's important for people to understand, it's cost-effective and well-run and run in a lean manner, and those in manufacturing understand what I mean.
And, you know, as you guys know, our average per pupil cost is below the state average. So, you know, that's helpful too. Are there places that we can improve? Absolutely. I don't think there's an organization that exists that can. Are we constantly looking to improve and look to evolve as an organization and meet the changing needs of students? I think the answer to that is yes, too, you know, and we'll continue to do that. And, you know, that's important, and, you know, there are resources that have to be used, in fact, to do that and do it appropriately. Do we have good people working for us? Yeah, I think so. You know, from, in every facet of our operations, I can't tell you how many compliments I got from the alert people regarding our custodians and the help they provided during the emergency shelter stuff. You know, our cafeteria staff, the same way, they came in, they cooked those meals. You know, Peter was in there even serving stuff.
Did he get sick?
Huh?
The cow died.
That's right. But, you know, and everybody pitched, you know, pitched in, Chuck's people, I mean, there are nights that those guys are here at three, four o'clock in the morning, because we have a problem. I remember last, last year when the pump went at the high school, Chuck, and we had water going down the, going down the high school hallway and in the cafeteria, those guys worked on that stuff all night, and the kids came to school the next morning, and you would never know that anything happened. So then our secretarial staff, they're great people, you know, support staff, great people. You know, I feel very fortunate that I work with quality people. And school board has been fantastic, you know, and you guys have asked really good questions, and this is really a good community of work, and they're good people, they're supportive of education, they're like all Yankees, not necessarily Yankee fans baseball, but basically Yankees who want to know, you know, we're not looking for...
You're losing us with this.
Doing well until you get to the Yankees thing.
Well, Yankee stuff in New England sense, am I getting a return on my money? Okay? And that's really, and I think the answer is yes. We're not looking for the Taj Mahal, it's meat and potatoes and get me my stuff. It's really, and I think we try to deliver on that.
Okay, great. Steve?
I understand the Budget Committee is having a meeting on Thursday night, and they're looking for community input on, you know, the budgets as an overall and all that. I think it's extremely important for us to remember, because I won't be able to attend the meeting, but from a, my school board had on, it's extremely important for us to remember that the, we, in times like this, when things are difficult, and I saw this in 1989, it is a time when commerce will start to grow, and those people with money will start to purchase properties at low prices, like the paving that we have, people will pick up deals, and they'll get ready to build. The auction, the auto auction is one that pops into my mind, is they bought that property for $250,000 in 1989, and today, its value on the tax records are over $3 million. So you'll have situations like that that will occur. And for commerce to grow in the community, it is imperative that we have the absolute best school system that we can. That's why people move here. Now, some naysayers, you know, may say that that's why people move away too, after their kids are gone. But the reality is, the value of the homes, the value of the community, as we broaden the tax base, the only way we're going to broaden the tax base is to make sure that we have a strong school system here. So it's important to support that. On the other hand, Nate, following your moving presentation, it's one of my Stoneyfield jokes. I have a little concern about us providing you input on January 3rd, and then you only having a few days to come up. I mean, what if we scare the heck out of you with requests that we may have? You going to be able to deal with that in a couple of days, in January?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good answer.
Good answer.
What if the, what if...
I mean, I'll say, we do what-if scenarios.
Okay. And what if the, what if, oh no, and you're great with, I might pick some of the dollar figures they were throwing out, I knew exactly what would be cut. What if the voters at the deliberative session form a contingency, and they come in, and they scare the heck out of you?
Well, there would be a limit to how far I would have gone down.
Wow, who said anything about going down?
Oh, if they add, then I'm going to stay silent.
That's a good sales tactic.
Okay, all right. Dan, just, that's fine, you can deal with it.
I just want to throw something out, that I have had people come up and talk to me, and I try to explain the way that some things work, and I hope that I explain it right. Maybe you can, you know, clear it up to me if I'm doing it wrong. And don't worry about not showing up for the meeting, because nobody else ever shows up for our meetings either anyway. Often, I could go through your budget and say that, and ask you questions, and say, I don't like A, B, and C in your budget, and I add it up, and it's $500,000. And we could cut $500,000 out of the budget. That doesn't necessarily mean you're going to take out A, B, and C.
That's correct.
And a lot of people just don't understand that. If you don't like it, and you don't want the money in there, that doesn't mean that's what's going to get cut out. So I ask people to be careful.
Yeah. Because, as has been said before, and Dan, and you obviously know, this is a bottom-line budget. And so that, let's say, somebody reduces the bottom line by five hundred, to use your figure, by a half a million dollars, they may think that this is where it should be cut, that that ultimate decision really will come back to the school board. So if somebody says, we think you can cut $500,000 by eliminating transportation for high school kids, just picking something at random, the board may say, I don't think so. We're not going to do that. We're going to direct the superintendent or the administration to come back with a series of recommendations for us where you would take that $500,000. So it's there. And then, as we all know, to some degree, and not to a big degree, we're building a budget eighteen months before it's going to be completed. And so there are going to be changes along the way. You know, I'll just take some real simple things. We could have two kids move in tomorrow and cost us $200,000. I gotta, we have to reconfigure the budget significantly to pick that up. We could run into the problem that we had several years ago with H1N1. That year, I think we spent another $30,000, $40,000, unanticipated costs on soap, paper towels, garbage bags, and hand schmutz, the antibacterial stuff. We hadn't planned on it. You know, so you wind up reconfiguring stuff. So you make some general adjustments. What you do know is, what's locked in is, once you issue contracts to people, you're locked in. So, for instance, the three hundred some odd teachers that we issue contracts, and once they're issued a contract, that's it. I can't say, give it back to me. So, you know, you've got limited maneuvering room. But Dan, you're absolutely right, it's a bottom-line budget. So, and then that ultimate decision really comes down to the school board, where it would be cut. But people do have to be careful, because, you know, what some, what somebody doesn't think has as higher value, somebody else really does. I'm trying to think of a nice way, a way of putting it. I may have more value for wrestling than I do for the chess club, but that doesn't make the chess club any less valuable to the kids that are in the chess club than the kids that are in wrestling. So it all, and that's how, and some people's outlook really is a fed block, and I can understand that, if my child is involved in, this is going to be important. Do I think we should fund the band? Yes, I do. Somebody may have greater value for something else beside the band. Somebody may value them equally. You know, it's the same thing. Do you have small class sizes at the elementary level and not offer several program options at the high school? It's all a balancing thing, you know, as to how it flops out.
All right. Thank you, Reed.
Reed?
Yeah.
Good.
Or, you know, the three other Reeds in here.
No. Or any of the other sessions. That's true. Okay, because you refused to have the other two budget workshops in December and the public hearing in December, this will be the last time I'll be coming before in the school board. I'm leaving for January.
Ah, I see. But you'll be back.
So I thought I'd give you, I had sixteen calls, all of them, three about the school, and thirteen about town, and all of them were with regard to cutting out A, B, or C, or whatever. And I was able to answer all the questions. But sixteen is the least amount of calls I've had since I've done this for ten, twenty years, more. So I'm wondering if you all, in January, you have five meetings there, I think I saw, you will, in each one of them, say, come to the deliberative session, because I won't be saying it. And I usually say that all the time when I come to the meetings, but I won't be saying it this year. So you all say it. Come and join us at the deliberative session. No, you don't have to have a quorum of any kind, so come and join, simply because you're interested, okay?
I take your point. We routinely do that every year, but you're right, we will be trying to reach out even more in the coming year.
And come and bother you with it, but...
Okay. Thank you very much, and have a good trip.
Thank you.
Does, no, hang on, hang on one, please. Does anybody see a need for the December 22nd meeting? Seeing none, we'll scratch that. Todd, are, is the Budget Committee going to be able to make, to come to the January 3rd meeting with your ideas and input that we can fold together and give to the super for the January 5th meeting?
I'm hoping to. That's, I think, our plan, our target.
So that timeframe works for you at this point?
Find out more on Thursday night, when we have a chance to discuss it in more detail. But that, in fact, in fact, when, procedurally, when do you need to have our recommendation by which meeting?
I'll find out. I gotta look at the calendar, and when am I going to stop printing?
Clearly, I would, I would think, just in terms of operationally, you'd probably want to have it before the public hearing, but...
Exactly.
That would be, that would be your decision.
But again, I asked, and I asked this question on the town side, and I think I got an answer. Peter can probably answer it. You know, we're going to give a recommendation before the deliberative session. If somebody comes to deliberative session and cuts 10 million and they vote for it, we get to vote again for what's on the ballot, correct? Our recommendation?
Yeah, but the ballot would be the amended budget.
No, I think, I think Chris is asking whether they can vote to recommend or not.
Okay, that's my question. We're not making our recommendation for the final ballot in the middle of January.
Your recommendation would be going forward to the deliberative session, what we have there, and then, if I remember correctly, after deliberative session, things would be a little bit different, you would vote, well, yep, we support it, or we don't support it, kind of thing.
Would we?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's going to be a little bit different this year. So I would, let's say theoretically, let's say, for the sake of argument, people put in $1 million in the budget, all right? So they've increased the budget, it's now 65 and a half million. Default is 64 and change. So what, if the board was so inclined, I'm not saying you would do this, I'm just using this as an example, or you could then vote and say, the board does not approve the recommended budget, does the board approve the budget, does the board not approve the budget, and you would take the vote. So let's say, you didn't approve the increase, or not everybody did, and it was two to three. You can do that. But keep in mind, if the budget is different, just to remind people in the audience, the general fund budget is different, there are two numbers, all right? So you can vote either for the recommended budget, let's say, at this point going forward, whatever the board does, or for the default budget. If, if action is taken at deliberative session, it's either significantly reduces that number or significantly increases that number, the default point then becomes the default budget, no pun intended. So that's that one article on there that gives people a double, an option as far as which number they can vote for, aside from the other one articles, which are just yes or no, this is choice A or choice B. It's not a choice of yes or no, it's one number or the other number.
Reed?
The deliberative sessions are both in the same week, I believe.
Yes, Monday and Friday.
Monday and Friday, so it's very important that you make sure you get your people to your deliberative session and town to there. I mean, that's the, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever had, having two deliberative sessions.
No, there was, there was actually a proposal to have them at the same time on the same day.
Oh, gee.
In the same room.
No. That at least makes sense.
How?
Huh?
How?
How does it make sense? Monday...
You can either go to one or the other.
You go to, both of them at the same time. You go from nine to 12, and from 12 to three. That's figurative time.
By the same time, they meant the same time.
No, no, I meant the same day.
Okay. Any, anything else from anybody?
I make a motion that we thank the administrators for working this year without a pay increase, and for their attendance at these meetings on their own time, and that we adjourn.
Second.
Merry, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year to everybody, and thank...
We are adjourned.